A qualm is present and I would like to call the meeting of the North Idaho College Board of Trustees order. Would you please join me with a pledge of allegiance offer?
(Applause). I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a number of folks for a public comment and we'll go right ahead with that right now. I'll try to pronounce your names correctly. Please give me Teresa Bornfall. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, President Swain and Mr. Lyons. My name is Dr. Teresa Bornfall. I'm a resident of Post Falls and a proud supporter of North Idaho College. Before I get started with the substance of my remarks today, I would first like to take a moment to wish my former colleagues a successful and fulfilling year. North Idaho College is an incredible asset in our community, a driver of more than $60 million of annual economic activity to our region. Without the hard work of the hundreds of team members here who make it their top priority to serve students, our community would not be as robust. So, thank you for your dedication, friends. I see your hard work and I miss you all. I'm here to speak today to the Board Conduct Policy in Action items. This item substantiates the section of the policy which defines how trustees should interact with college personnel stating, quote, "Trustees are responsible for familiarizing themselves with college policies, adhering to those policies and procedures and guidelines, and complying with the spirit and intent of those policies." I support this additional verbiage because it would have been very helpful during my time at North Idaho College to ensure the integrity of student records, perhaps our most important charge. I'd like to elaborate. This past March, the office that I previously managed, which provides FERPA-approved access to student information, was visited by the interim president. During that time, the interim president requested personal information about a student on behalf of a trustee. He substantiated the request saying, quote, "The trustee would have come in themselves, but they thought that you'd be scared. It was inappropriate for a trustee to request personal information about a student by proxy, a situation that a savvy administrator could have quelled before imposing that burden on frontline employees." Part of the reason I left North Idaho College is because under the temporary administration and some current team members, I did not see our institution's value for data integrity in line with mine. If you would like additional details into the situation, I'd be happy to provide you with the emails associated as well as the analysis by Dr. Lyons. I've perused the policy manual and I don't see that the board members are ever provided with any level of FERPA training. FERPA, of course, is the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, which is a federal law that protects student information. There are ample online resources to learn about this legal protection. To follow policy, you certainly need to know it. In the situation I outlined above, NIC team members were forced to police the behavior of trustees. I appreciate this policy because it demands that trustees police themselves according to the policies that have been developed by industry professionals. I may no longer be a member of the NIC team, but I will always be Team NIC. Thank you all.
Thank you. Deborah Rose.
Prior to the appointment of the three new honorable trustees to this board recently, women who came to address the board were often bullied, verbally abused, and treated with blatant and undeserved disrespect by two of the KCRCC-endorsed board members, sadly still serving on this board. Until this most recent unprofessional and childish conduct was displayed, no need for my following request was warranted. As you consider changes to the Board Conduct Policy, under General Guidelines for Conduct Number Nine, on page 2, it says, quote, "Maintain the highest standards of civility and respect to public office through the absence of unwarranted criticism of fellow board members, the board, NIC administrators, or employees." Given the inappropriate conduct of these certain board members over the last 20 months or so, I ask this current board to consider adding to this list of entities in Number Nine, members of the public who address the board. I also ask that censure be imposed when such civility and respectfulness are violated. On another note, considering the 18 years of selfless and professional service Christie Wood has provided the NIC community, I wholeheartedly support her emeritus nomination. Her service has been greatly appreciated by many.
Thank you.[310.12][310.12](Applause). Ron Hartman.
My name is Ron Hartman and I appreciate the board giving me an opportunity to speak. In the spirit of transparency, I am requesting the following information be added to the July 14 minutes that were posted online. It's just regards to the purchase of the property, Fort Ground Grill. What I'd like to know is, it didn't show in the minutes who voted for and who voted against buying the property. I'd like to have that clarified so we could see who voted yes and who voted no. Also, what wasn't explained by the Vice President of, I think it was Finance, was, did the appraisal include the alcohol license? I think that's important information, the no. And if yes, it did, what was the appraised value of the alcohol license? And then, in today's minutes, I'd like to have the following information included. Did the purchase agreement include the alcohol license? In other words, when we purchased it, did it come with the alcohol license or not? And if no, why not? And if yes, when will NIC sell the alcohol license? Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Whelan.
Good evening. My name is Laura Whelan. I've been a citizen of Cootney County since 1991. Chairman Wald, trustees, President Swainy, Councilman, Counselor. My comment today is on the same item as two of the previous speakers have spoken to, the Board Conduct Policy. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to provide public comment. During the September-October 2021 board meetings when trustee Banducci was chair, there was no public comment allowed. It was reinstated in November of '21 at that board meeting, so thank you. The Board Conduct Policy was initially adopted at the August of 2020 board meeting. It was rescinded three months later at the December 2020 board meeting. The board functioned without a policy governing their general conduct for approximately five months. Responding to campus concerns, which included staff, faculty, anybody in the NIC campus, the policy was reinstated with amendments in May of 2021, allowing for confidential communication between board members and the NIC community. This effectively allowed board members to circumvent standard communication channels and communicate directly with NIC community members. The policy being presented again today, 15 months later, deletes the word confidential. This change was on the June 22 board agenda as an action item, but tabled. I would encourage you to approve the Board Conduct Policy 2.01.10 as presented in your packets today. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Lippert.
My name is Michelle Lippert and I was a philosophy professor here for 26 years. I am currently happily retired. I was so pleased to see that emeritus status is being considered for former trustee Christie Wood. I have known Christie for years, beginning when she was serving on the Coeur d'Alene School Board and I was on the Post Falls School Board. During my time as Chair of the Faculty Assembly, I came to know her in her new role, that of a trustee for North Idaho College. Christie's service to NIC has been characterized by integrity, courage, and humility. Integrity. Christie's priorities were clear. She cares deeply about NIC, its students, faculty, and staff. Her service on the board was marked by a focus on the institution and doing what is best for the college. Courage. Christie not only speaks truth to power, she speaks it to everyone, especially when the truth is not popular. This is true courage. Humility. A true sign of humility is the willingness to admit that one might be wrong, to listen to those voices who don't share your point of view, and to come to a new understanding. Time and time again, Christie has demonstrated this quality. Christie Wood truly deserves the honor of the emeritus status.
Thank you. Sorry, I don't have a last name, Randy.
Neil.
Neil.
The thing that I want to talk about is ethics. I learned of ethics at this very college, as I am an NIC alumni. In this very room, a former trustee made an accusation that a sitting person is going to get our NIC's accreditation brought under review. This was a false narrative that was laid out to the public. As she is the president of a nonprofit organization, that organization filed a complaint against NIC and three other sister nonprofits to that organization followed in suit, which brought the accreditation of this college under review. That is a bold-faced lie to present one thing in public and then do another thing behind the scenes. It is deplorable and is not worthy of emeritus status. The, I believe in a representative government, and there are three people that have been appointed to this board that are making big decisions for this college that do not represent the will of the people. The true chair of this trustee board is Todd Banducci, and he was put into that position by people that were elected by the voters. And this, the trustees that have removed him as chair have acted unethically. People on this board should have been focused on promoting things like better student advising so that when students are done with NIC and they're ready to move on to bigger and better things, but instead, there was a politicized squabble that was not in the best interests of this school or the community. And that is detestable. You know, failure to accept the will of the community because they voted in a majority and then trying to create a narrative, lying, then going filing complaint, all, you know, and thankfully, you know, there are members of our community that are diligent and know the truth. And perhaps many of the speakers before me didn't know the truth of this situation, but I am happy to share and shine the light of truth for this entire community so that when November comes around, the NIC Board of Trustees...
Excuse me, Mr. Neil. Mr. Neil, there are two minutes allotted. You are more than a minute over your limit, and it's, your subject right now has gone off-topic. It's not on an agenda item.
I'll just finish my sentence. I hope that in November, that this NIC Board of Trustees will go back to serving the real will of the people of this community. Thank you.[921.75][921.75](Applause).
Thank you for your comments, Randy. Laura Tennyson.
My name is Laura Tennyson. I'm a Coeur d'Alene resident and a North Idaho College alumna. Thank you for providing us the opportunity tonight to give public comment. I am here to speak about the agenda item having to do with granting Christie Wood emeritus status at this school. I first met Christie 25 years ago when she was the School Resource Officer at my high school here in Coeur d'Alene. I thought she was one of the coolest people I had ever seen when she stepped out of her classic car into my high school. At the age of 16, I obviously, you know, didn't know that much about her or about this community, but since then, my admiration for Christie has only grown. I have seen how she has dedicated herself to this community on the Coeur d'Alene School Board, on the Cootney County Task Force for Human Relations, and in her 18 years of service on the North Idaho College Board. I've attended many meetings and was able to see Christie in action, and I saw that she always made decisions that were in the best interest of the majority and of the college rather than what was most popular. Several months ago, we saw Christie make a very selfless decision to remove herself from the board in order to allow a better direction for our Board of Trustees. Since then, we have seen that we are no longer in danger of losing our accreditation, so I think that we can all see that that was the best decision that could have been made for this college. I ask that you consider Christie for emeritus status tonight when you take that vote and think about how much she has selflessly given herself to this community. And in the fall, we will fight like hell to make sure that the NIC Board remains upstanding. Thank you very much.[1061.58][1061.58](Applause).
Carrie Seymour.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I would like to speak on the emeritus status for Christie Wood. To honor Ms. Wood for spearheading the threat against the college accreditation would be unconscionable. She also quit because she didn't get her way. It is my belief that this teaches our young people that lack of integrity and discipline are laudable attributes, and that alone should prohibit any recognition. If this foolishness passes, it will be a glaring example of all that is wrong with NIC. Thank you.[1130.83][1130.83](Applause).
William Lee.
Trustees Banducci and Trustee McKenzie, thanks for letting me come and give public comment. My name's William Lee. I'm just a citizen here, never attended here. So, I haven't had a chance to come speak for a month or two, but I want to make some notes. First of all, First Amendment rights. Second of all, the makeup of this trustee board. And third, Christie Wood. So, first of all, First Amendment rights. So, in Idaho statute, we're allowed to make public comment, right? Like, we all kind of know that. But the nature of the public comment...
Excuse me, Mr. Lee.
Mr. Lyons, if you could let him finish, because Christie Wood has trampled plenty of people's First Amendment rights. It's totally applicable.
Point of order.
Mr. Lee, Mr. Lyons, a public comment is restricted to items on the agenda, so other items off the agenda are kind of out of order for this, so...
Okay, so, the Board Conduct Policy thing that you guys have on the agenda, basically there might be some kind of thing where you're going to modify it to delimit people's ability to give public comment. So, that's, maybe I'll just...
Case in point.
...shift it in that way. So, yeah, Idaho statutes, we all kind of know that we can give public comment in an open meeting, right? But the nature of that public comment, I think that's what you guys are maybe going to try to delimit. Based on American law, the American legal framework, public comment can be anything. It could be robust in nature. It could be scathing. I can criticize anyone and name names if I want.
Excuse me, Mr. Lee. Public comment is not an issue that is a substantive discussion here.
Okay.
And let me just remind, and you still have, we'll have your time. The public comment is something that the board allows. This is a business meeting of the Board of Trustees. It is not a public meeting like a public hearing where people are allowed to come up and testify. The board, the college board, allows some limited public comment consistent with the parameters that we set. That's two minutes of public comment, limited to agenda items, and that's the parameters of public comment. So, please continue on a subject related to the meeting.
Public comment can be anything.
No.
If you guys come to the meeting and you hear me talk about, like, yeah, you hear me talking about, like, the endangered wildlife in Antarctica, you guys just need to listen to me for, you know, however long I choose to go on. That's the kind of nature of what we have here. To delimit it is, I think that's kind of slippery, a slippery slope, right? Because then you can just kind of keep, you can censor someone from criticizing a trustee that's done something, right? That would not be free speech. So anyways, I'm done with this topic. I'll move to the next one. So, the current trustee board, I don't view you as...
Please cut the mic.
You're not going to give him his time?
No, his time is up. His time is up and he won't follow...
He's just lost half of his minute.
His time is up and he won't follow the rules. Please sit down, please sit down or I will have security escort you from the room. That's it.
That was only like maybe 30 seconds of me actually talking, so...
I will say it one more time. Sit down or I will have security escort you from the room. Security?
Well, now I get to see, are the same criticisms going to be leveled now as it were against me? If that makes sense.
If you wish to speak, please address the chair.
I will speak. You're the chair. Why did he just take over the meeting? Are you the chair or not? Are you in charge of the meeting or are you not?
Are you going to...
I'm just asking the question.
I am the chair.
Well, then act like it. Thank you. Either you are or you're not.
I hope people in November can help me restore free speech on campus.[1401.41][1401.41](Laughter). You used up half of his, Lyons, and he wants to talk about trustee agenda emeritus status. There's plenty of things to criticize there.
Trustee McKenzie, if you wish to speak, please address the chair.
Why? He doesn't.
Please address the chair if you wish to...
Is it equal rules for Lyons then? Or is there two sets of rules on campus here? Because that's what I observe over and over and over again.
There's one set of rules. Follow the policy. It's not that hard.
You don't even follow the policy yourself!
Are you going to talk to us about policy and procedure and...
I will absolutely. Yes, sir.
But you did not follow.
I will absolutely. I will absolutely.
I'm going to take charge of this meeting. I want both of you two to be quiet for a moment.
An example again, where you have two trustees and that didn't happen this meeting.
Would you please escort the gentleman out?
Mark Lyons, you spoke for above a minute and a half. I spoke for 30 seconds.
I stopped the timer. You are already over, and what you've spoken about was, one, off-topic, and, two, you went more than two minutes.
The next speaker is Howard Coons. Howard Coons, please escort Mr. Lee from the room.
I do appreciate the chance for you to...
Let's turn it back on again.
...allow the public to speak, and I also appreciate the fact that you do it in the beginning of the meeting, so we don't have to wait. I'm going to stay on topic. Should Christie Wood be granted the title of trustee emeritus of NIC? I want to talk about policy number 2.01.10, Board Member General Conduct. Board members are expected to work with fellow trustees in a spirit of harmony and cooperation. Point nine, board members are expected to maintain the highest standards of civility and respect through the absence of unwarranted criticism of fellow board members. Trustee Wood was notorious for her spats with trustee Banducci during his tenure as chairman. Going on, board members are expected to, number six, respect the majority decisions of the board. When the board majority terminated the previous president of NIC, trustee Wood was very active and vocal in criticizing that decision. Point 12, a trustee will not exert influence on any decision in which the trustee has any interest. When things did not go according to her interests, trustee Wood used the full power of her association with the Task Force on Human Relations to shake this institute to its core. She was more interested in furthering her agenda than in the betterment of this college and the community it serves. It is for these reasons that Christie Wood should not be given the title of trustee emeritus. This might say it's interesting that in this topic, very clearly divided, it's like people are for her or against her. This is a very divided community. And I would say, Chairman Wald, you need to be in control of this, not the new president.[1624.15][1624.15](Applause).
Ken Howard.
New Mexico resident. Welcome from the South.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, I'm here to speak on two topics. One is the board policy, and the second is the emeritus offering to Christie Wood. With regard to the board policy, I would encourage you to pass it. It's been a long time without us having a policy that adequately addresses the duties and responsibilities and the parameters of how trustees should act. Trustees should be held to rules just like everybody else, and this policy is a start, and I think a good start, in terms of directing the conduct of trustees in the future. With regard to Christie, I spent almost 12 years on the board with her. We had disagreements, we had agreements. But I can tell you that all the times that I had disagreements with her, they were dealt with in a civil and the appropriate kind of attitude. We would disagree on many things, especially with regard to budget and other issues that had to do with the health of the college. At no time, even when we had disagreements, did I ever detect that her conduct was anything but directed at the betterment of NIC, the students, the faculty, and the staff. I appreciate the fact that you have nominated her for this honorable emeritus position. She has earned it, and she deserves it. Thank you.
Thank you.[1742.83][1742.83](Applause). Ross McLean.
I'm just going to echo Ken Howard. I'm not going to go a history of relationship with Christie Wood and I, because she was a cop and I'm a criminal.[1772.33][1772.33](Laughter). But she's been here, and she's been a solid member of our community, and I want to kind of commend you guys, you know, to unanimously appoint her this title. It's nice to see all men. I thought I was seeing men. But anyway, I just come to stand up for the lady, that's all.
Thank you.[1795.83][1795.83](Applause). Thank you. The next item on the agenda is upbeat, celebrating success, dual credit.
Well, good evening, board of trustees, President Swain, members, guests, and faculty and peers. It is my pleasure to always bring up something happy and successful here at the college. So first, I would like to invite, we'll start with dual credit, if that's all right. Alex, would you like to come up for a second? Alex is a former student, or actually a dual credit student of ours, and he's got a very amazing story to share with all of you. Thank you, Alex.
Good evening, Chair Wold, President Swain, trustees, Mr. Lyons, colleagues, peers, and friends. For those of you who have not already met me, my name is Alex Elliott. I am a student enrolled in the dual credit program, specifically in the English program with a special interest in literature. I'm an incoming senator for ASNC Student Government, as well as a Student Events Board Associate here at NIC. In addition to ASNC and Student Events Board, I'm also very involved in the English Department here on campus. And just as a quick disclaimer, even though I am an officer for the ASNC Student Government, I am speaking from my personal experience and not on behalf of the ASNC Student Government this evening. I'm coming here today to talk a little bit about the dual credit program in hopes to provide a different and maybe even a new perspective on the program to those outside of it. The way I see it, every program is going to have its obstacles, but I believe it is important to identify and discuss solutions to overcoming those obstacles. In my experience working in the dual credit program, I have encountered several obstacles. The first obstacle is the equivalencies between high school course requirements and NIC course requirements. Since I am studying English, I have taken and will take several high-division English courses. The school district stated that I needed to take English 175, which is Intro to Literature. However, at that point, I had already taken English 277, 268, and 285, which are higher-division English courses, so it would have been redundant for me to jump backwards and take English 175. Another obstacle is the disconnect between seat time requirements between the two institutions. In order to graduate from the Coeur d'Alene School District, you need two credits of government. I have taken Political Science 101 here at NIC, which is three credits of American National Government. However, the school district only counts Political Science 101 as 1.5 credits on their side per seat time requirement policy. And so it would have been redundant for me to take extra credits of government since I had already taken three that exceeds the requirement of the two on the high school side. While there are obstacles in the dual credit program, that does not change the fact that the program is a great success and continues to be a great success. The program has provided me with opportunities to succeed, get involved, and support my professional, academic, and personal growth two years earlier than most traditional students. I am very thankful that I have had this opportunity to learn and grow while also getting a great head start on my college career. All of this to say, I feel, and many of my peers that I have spoken with agree, that there's a large disconnect between what counts for the high school and what counts for courses at NIC. I hope to raise awareness to this so that these points of disconnect can start to be repaired.
Thank you, Alex. We're very proud of him and of his success and so pleased that he chose to continue his education here at North Idaho College and then be part of our student government as well. And now I'd like to ask Marcy, our director of our dual credit program, to come up for a minute and share some additional thoughts.
Good evening. Chair Wold, Board of Trustees members, President Swain, Mr. Lyons, and friends of NIC. I'm really happy to be here tonight to talk about dual credit. That's kind of my thing. We have, oh, I have some slides. Nothing fancy. So on our team, we have myself, Eric, Alethea, Will, and Delana. Eric and I work with the dual credit students, kind of inputting them, and Will and Alethea work with the dual credit students that are going out. So they're the transition coordinators, transitioning them from a dual credit student to a regular student. We have approximately 1,300 students each semester, and that number goes up and down a little bit, but for the most part, that includes all those high schools that you see there and homeschool students. We have a large homeschool population. We partner with those high schools that are north the Bonners Ferry and all the way down to Orophino. And so we keep busy with those students, helping them through the system. About half of these students take a class on campus or online, half are in high schools, and many do a combination of both. So we have a lot of kids coming down on campus, a lot of kids working on these credits in the high school. In 2022, we had approximately 95 graduate with their AA degree. I say approximately because that number changes a little bit. We have to get their high school transcript into us before we can post their grade here. And so that number kind of goes up as we get those high school transcripts in. We also work with the CTE programs on campus. We have 36 dual credit students in full-time CTE programs out of CTE building in here in those programs that you see listed. They can participate by having almost all of their high school credits finished in their senior year, so they're maybe just finishing up like their senior math, senior English. And so they are getting a great head start in a lot of these programs, and they're doing phenomenal job on them. So throughout the year, what we do is we do a lot of in-school visits. This year, we're planning on having a day at the school, whatever school it is. That way, we can really be there to help those dual credit students and the counselors in the high school. We focus on retention and reducing those barriers. And we're partnering with NIC Connect so we can help those students again transition to coming down here on a full-time basis. We're building strong partnerships with area high schools, and this one's kind of a fun one. We're piloting a Tools for Duals program. So we got some feedback from some of our duals that the cost of the CTE tools kind of were prohibited. And so we got a little bit of some money, scholarship, and we bought actual tools for like the welding program or the automotive. And we're piloting that program, and we actually got our first dual to get the tools today. So we're kind of excited to see how that goes. So that way, that's kind of getting rid of some of those barriers we were talking about. Just really am excited for all of our duals. We tried to, COVID kind of put a kibosh on the dual breakfast that we had for several years, but we're hoping to bring that back as we can celebrate their success at the end of the year. Thank you for your time.
Chair Bandusi, question? Chair Wold, question?
Yes.
Oh. Question, trustee?
Yeah, I just have a question. Is it true that, we're going to get an enrollment update later on that's more than double digits, but is it true that the dual credit enrollment is our least drop category?
Well, I like to think it is. Yes, partly because we enroll late. So like our kids will be, the high school will be enrolling all through September. And so typically, our numbers are like around that 1,300 mark once the end of September hits. So our numbers don't come in until a little bit later.
So the week-over-week or year-over-year decline that we're kind of monitoring right now for student enrollments, are we seeing that in dual enrollment?
I don't think so. I think they're pretty, it's pretty stable from the last report that I saw that I think it's pretty stable. It's down a little bit now because our numbers aren't in, you know, all the high school kids haven't enrolled yet.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm seeing too, and I like it. Dual enrollment's doing great.
Rocks. Any other questions? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one comment.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Representative Wayne Meyer to thank for dual credit in Idaho. He carried the bill and he introduced dual credit to us, and it's a great program.
Thank you.
Well, we appreciate Marcy. I've worked with Marcy for years and watched her take the dual credit program from a couple hundred into about 1,300. So she's done a fantastic job building those relationships with our school districts and our students. Appreciate that so much. So next, it is my pleasure to welcome Rena Cooper, our professor of biology, to come up and talk about our Embry program.
Chair Wold, President Swain, Board of Trustees, thank you for having us. So I am Professor Renee Cooper, and we want to talk about Embry tonight because it has been a great success. And it's a weird acronym, and it's a government thing, so it has an acronym. So the I stands for IDEA, which means Institutional Development Award. The N stands for Network, and the network is all 12 institutions of higher education in the state of Idaho. The B is for biomedical, and so anything that will contribute to human health. The R is for research, and the E is for excellence. So Embry, Idea Network of Biomedical Research Excellence. So it's a federal grant. It comes from the National Institutes of Health. It comes into the University of Idaho, and the University of Idaho subawards to all 12 institutions in the state of Idaho. Idaho is one of 23 Embry states, and we do think we have the best program. And of the states, the schools in Idaho, I know we have the best undergraduate program. I've been with Embry since, for 21 years since it started, and I'm getting kind of long in the tooth. So Kirsten Blanchett has been on board for several years, and she has just added all kinds of energy to it. So she's here to tell you about the student's success this year.
Thank you, Renee. I'm Kirsten Blanchett. I'm a chemistry professor here at North Idaho College, and I'm in charge of all of our Idaho Embry students from NIC. We had nine students in our cohort this year, and they all did a fabulous job. I'm in charge of making sure that they get professional development, that they have everything that they need for their research, that they are used to talking about their science, especially to the public and other scientists, which is quite the challenge. Then we all go to a state conference together, and at the conference, they compete by showing off their posters and by doing fast pitches, which are three-minute speeches about their research. I'm going to talk briefly about their, about the students that were, that placed for their posters this year that were part of our cohort. We had, as I said, we had nine students and six of them placed this year from our cohort, which is phenomenal. There are two categories that they competed in for their posters, or sorry, three categories, pardon me. The first is the Scholars category, which is a two- or three-week short dive into research. The next two ones are 10-week full-time research opportunity, where one of them is Industry Interns, where the students work with one of our local industry partners like Accurate Testing, or ALK, or SVL. And then the other, the last one is Fellows. And Fellows work with a professor usually from another university in their research lab. In the Scholars category, one of our students placed in third place. That was Nick Farnham for Volatile Organic Compounds on Wildfire Smoke in the north-central Idaho region. And then in Industry, we had three students place for their posters. Mailea LaFleur and Aaron Pierce tied for second place. Mailea studied heavy metal bioavailability, pardon me, over time in Cougar, too, which is a region in Lake Coeur d'Alene. Aaron Pierce also dealt with the water or testing water this summer. She developed a refined method in order to assess lake health for Lake Coeur d'Alene. And then in, we, for our last student in the Industry category, you can see them celebrating right there. There was Jaden Pierce, who's getting her award right now on the slides, and she placed first for her, for her poster on the health risks of personal biofilms on water bottles. Lastly, we have the Fellows category, which is a student choice and a faculty choice. I do want to mention that one of our former NIC Embry students, who's now at U of I, Molly Murphy, placed third place, student choice in that category. And then we had two from our current cohort. Will Otten, who worked on organic synthesis, he synthesized oxytocin and a related analog, he placed third. And then Cassie Larson, she tied with him for her research on microbes in micro, in, sorry, in smoke that is mediated from soil. So those were, those are all of our students that, at the conference. Lastly, I would like to introduce Hannah Griffin, who was one of our students this year, and she's going to talk to you a little bit more about Embry from the student side with her fast pitch.
I have a question. Over the course of the summer, was anyone discouraged? Perhaps there were glorious dreams for a project and results, and then the setbacks. Did anyone have to cut back or completely revision their project? Some may say yes, others no, but I believe all may be encouraged by a brief message on science and serendipity. I'm Hannah Griffin from North Idaho College, and I'll begin with two different Embry experiences. Last summer in the first lab, I was in a genetics project that was coming to a close. My mentor had already set the protocol, and I was able to collect data for and present the last 3D rod bipolar cell poster, standing solidly on the past four years of work. This summer, in the co-fear lab, it was a completely new project in pyroarobiology, which studies the transport of viable microbes via wildfire smoke. So by testing captured isolates, we could fill a gap of knowledge regarding their endurance capabilities based on what survived or died. Easy, right? In a new project, there are no tips or tricks. We had to invent our protocol and answer questions like, what do you grow the microbes in before testing? Liquid broth? Agar plates? When do you test them? In log phase or stationary? How do you know that all of them are in that phase? Measuring liquid cloudiness with spectrofitometry is common, but what if the fungi grow in giant pom-poms, and they did, leaving the liquid perfectly clear? And when that's answered, what medium do you use to test them in? The same broth or a buffer solution? Do you heat them in the liquid or evaporate them first? Each, even before the actual experiment, each test run kept revealing new variables which kept needing new test runs. And this exercise is creativity, but to set reliable methods and controls, we needed science, not alchemy. So we decided to cut the project size, wanting things to be observable, measurable, and repeatable instead of rushing results. Then, in the very last week of the summer, I finally ran five endurance experiments back-to-back, and did the results align with our hypothesis? No. But that is where my final point comes in. Serendipity is the phenomenon of finding valuable things not sought for. Maybe there are others here who struggle with methods or get results that are not sought for, but that doesn't make them any less valuable. Instead, we form a counter hypothesis, which is tested as the project goes on. Part of research is learning to see the big picture and plan phases, but also to be content with the part we play, willing to pass on the baton. If we embrace the scientific... If we embrace the scientific method with perseverance, serendipity is never far behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. She presented that fast pitch at the conference, but sadly, we didn't take one of those trophies this year. We're open for questions if you guys have any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Got to make a statement.
Statement?
I just, I want to remind everyone that when we say these students are undergrads, they're going up against students at four-year institutions that have two more years of experience and are still undergrads. And as the, the presentation that Hannah just gave us, I'd put her up against anybody. That's the first time I've heard that presentation, but I'd put her up against anybody, and I think we've got a lot to be proud of, of the INBRI program and NIC students in general, and of course Hannah personally. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We want to keep her, and we'd put her up against anybody else, so.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item on the agenda reminds me of an interview we had with a presidential candidate a couple months ago, asked him what his, his idea of the role of community college and what was important in a community college. And his statement was, students, staff, faculty, community. So this part, we get to listen to our constituents, and we'll start off with the associated students, Damian Maxwell. Sorry, I stole that from you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Damian Maxwell. I am the ASNC president. Here today, we also have a few members of ASNC, so please give a warm welcome to Vivian Jabrin, Ashley Garza, and Alex Elliott. So ASNC has a few big things coming up. We have the Day of Service Cardinal Cruise and Dirt Cart coming up here in September. We also have the Green Dot Training taken care of, as well as the Staff Convocation and Week of Welcomes is already underway. We're going to be appointing special roles to our ASNC senators in the upcoming meeting and interviewing for new senators. We also have the One Small Step, the spring survey results to go over, and civic engagement such as encouraging people to register to vote.
Thank you. From the Faculty Assembly, Ben Sheena.
Chair Wald, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. It is Teshida. I'll let you, I'll give you a couple on that one. It's a rough one.
My second tonight.
So I want to note that we had a lot of great energy on campus today. Today was the first day of classes for many students, not all of them, but it was awesome to be back. Lots of excitement in the air. Faculty worked hard to prepare for this last week. We were on campus doing trainings and in meetings quite a bit. We're working on core courses to adapt to now multiple start dates throughout the semester, adapting courses to different delivery methods or multiple delivery methods, adapting to a change in the last day to add classes to allow more students to come to campus, preparing for the Week of Welcome this week, learning about our new Panopto video recording editing software, going through trainings on that and learning about the new features for this new software and how we can take advantage of those for classes. I want to give a shout out to our new faculty who showed up this year. It's a wild time to be starting out as a new faculty member. I'm trying to keep my head above water after over a decade of being in this, and it's a big shout out to them. Also, a big shout out to their mentors who are working alongside them to help them out. The faculty met last week in our assembly. Dr. Swain stopped by to give his thoughts on a variety of topics and took some questions. We really appreciate him stopping by. We did an overview of our procedures and rules for our new faculty, as well as returning faculty in light of the new Zoom age and trying to get a handle on how we operate with faculty at different satellite campuses and zooming in. We did have a vote on our bylaws that was unsuccessful, as we did have, do have a minimum 60% threshold voting yes of all faculty for that. We weren't quite at, we were over the 60% in attendance, however, we didn't quite get enough eye votes for that one. We had a call for volunteers and nominations. The president is putting together a new administrative structure committee, and we're working on getting some faculty reps. And that was the end of our meeting. I want to end my comments tonight with a big thanks, thanks to all the staff on campus for all the hard work that they put in throughout the summer, getting ready for everyone to return. I want to welcome our returning students back to campus and welcome the new students to campus. That concludes my report.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
From the Staff Assembly, Keri, I hope I don't blow this one.
Very close.
Simonet. Simonet. Well, my French is weak.
That's all right. I only say that bill collectors call me Simonet, so. But good evening, Board of Trustee members, NIC students, staff and faculty, and members of the public. Thank you so much for having me tonight. My name is Keri Simonet, and I'm the Senior Admin of Operations for the Workforce Training Center out in Post Falls, as well as your new Chair of Staff Assembly for the 2022-2023 school year. Really looking forward to this upcoming year. I think we're going to have a fabulous year. I don't currently have a lot to report. We had our Staff Assembly picnic for the month of August. That kind of took the place of our formal Staff Assembly meeting, so we'll resume that on September 8th. And we had a great time at the Staff Assembly picnic. Sodexo was very kind and provided our wonderful food. We had a lot of games out on the lawn, and I think everybody really did enjoy it. Dr. Swain was nice enough to come out and say a few words of welcome to us as well. Our last Sterling Silver Award winner is somebody that is kind of near and dear to my heart. His name is Andy Ruppel, and he won the June Sterling Silver Award. He's actually my direct supervisor out at the Workforce Training Center. He's the Business Operations Manager out there. And I do have to say that with no prejudice intended, he is the best boss that I think I have ever had. So he, he is fabulous, yeah. So definitely take a look at the website and take a look at all the amazing things that our coworkers have said about Andy. Again, don't have a whole lot to report. We will be returning September 8th for our Staff Assembly formal meeting, and that's it. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Senate Representative Neil Doyle.
Thank you, Chairman Wald, Board Trustees, President Swain, and guests. My name is Neil Doyle. I am the Outreach Coordinator for NIC. I'm with the Information Technology Help Desk. I'm the new Chair for the Senate for this year. I have been with NIC for three years, working full-time, six if you include my part-time work at the Help Desk. I'm very much looking forward to working with the board and all the different constituent groups this year to help shape college policy and procedure going forward. During its last meeting on May 12th, 2022, the Senate had a first read on the following items. Procedure 3.02.08, which is the Faculty Employment Procedure. Policy, Procedure 3.02.09, which is the Tenure Procedure, and Policy 3.02.21, which is the Faculty Evaluation Procedure. On all of those procedures, there were general questions but no major changes made, so we will be looking at the second read on those three items on our first meeting this year, which is going to be this Thursday, August 25th, and we'll discuss those items again. That's all I've got for the Senate report right now. We haven't had our first meeting this year yet, so.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. The next item on the agenda, I get the opportunity to introduce Dr. Swain to his first President's Report. Dr. Swain and I make up the agenda together, and we've been doing a lot of work trying to delineate what is board policy, what does the board do, what does the administrator do? And so many of the issues that sometimes come to board members will be sent to the president to deal with it from an administrative level, so he will cover a number of topics tonight. So, Dr. Swain, thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thanks, Chairman Wald. First of all, I want to say today, as Ben Teshida stole my thunder, this is opening day for NIC Fall 2022. We had a bunch of students on campus finally. It was exciting. They were excited, and it just means we're, we're here, we're open for business, and I think everyone is, all the students are excited to start learning. On Saturday was move-in day at the dorms. I dropped by, and it was incredibly well organized. The, the staff and RAs in the, in the dorms were, were there. They made everyone feel welcome. I got to speak to a lot of parents, and if you've ever watched this happen, they bring way too much stuff, and they end up taking half of it home because, you know, really, how many microwaves do you need in a four-person suite? So they, they make those decisions and, and go home, and they leave their most precious cargo with us, and that is their students. And so we take that as a very serious mission to further their education and, and make sure that we do our job well. All right. So first item on the agenda then, for, for me, as a, as a President's Report, is, is I want to talk about general policy. A lot of, several board members submitted items that they wanted on the agenda. So I wanted to clarify my perspective on this, and I will be absolutely fair and equitable. I don't care what side of the, of the fence you're on, the same rules apply to everyone. This is a business meeting of North Idaho College that takes place in public, so that frames the, the conduct of the business. The perspective, and so, so there are a couple of items that I will call questions and curiosities from constituents. So what I've done is, on, on usually Fridays or Saturdays, I provide a pretty extensive update to board members that allows them to answer questions and address those questions and curiosities. If something comes up that is a question, I'll, I'll say, for example, someone asked about my mask policy, and that came from Trustee McKenzie. And I have said publicly, I said it in my interview, there was a report in the spokesman review, I've said it multiple times, I have no intention of imposing a mask policy. So the, the question's been asked and answered, and I would like, I would like the trustees to just, you know, you can just respond. If somebody asks that question, you can just respond and say, the president and the NIC has no intention of imposing a mask policy. Okay? Then a follow-up question came back. What about somebody above you if they impose a mask policy? There are, as far as I can tell, two people that can impose a mask policy on NIC. One is the governor, and one is the president. I'm not sure about the legality of that, Mr. Lyons. Is that, is there anybody else that might be possible to?
Theoretically, the, the Panhandle Health Board of Trustees could pass a mask mandate that would cover NIC.
That's according to statute, the only person who can.
Excuse me, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Trustee McKenzie, you have a question?
If you, thanks to the legislature, it's only entrusted into the State Board of Trustees, as I said in my email in response to that lady.
Yeah, so I, I, I'm not disagreeing. I'm just saying that I think in terms of a person, it's probably, the governor might impose it, the president might impose it. And if the, and if somebody from the North Idaho Health imposes it, then you'll have to ask those folks for their policy. I, I can't, I can't predict what their policies are. Ask them whatever their policy is. If, if they have the authority to impose it on us, then we have an obligation to follow that policy. And, and that's, that's it. I mean, there's, there's not a whole lot of debate on that, so, and they're, but they're best equipped to answer that question, so if, if you have a question about what the governor might do, ask the governor. If you have a question about what the president might do, ask the governor or the president. And if you have a question about what North Idaho Health might do, you can ask them. I won't speculate or spend a lot of time on that. Questions regarding past decisions or works in progress. I'll tend to address those in my President's Report. An example of that is Fort Ground Grill. Our work with the Ombudsman Program is, is another, and the college insurance situation. There's not often enough material to have staff prepare a full report, so I'll cover that in my President's Report. Business questions, critical, new topics or discoveries made that impact the college and the business of the college that we're working to address, or philosophical change that we need to introduce, maybe included as part of the President's Report, and either current or future agenda items, and that will be fluid depending on the, the level of detail that needs to be presented. Examples include, and we'll talk about some of these tonight, recruiting, marketing, enrollment, and you'll hear, as I said, some of those tonight. All right. So that's philosophy. Now on the topic of Fort Ground Grill. The decision to purchase the property was made on the 14th of July at the Board of Trustees Meeting, and, and we can correct the minutes to indicate who voted for that as, as noted by one of our speakers tonight. The appraisal and the lease are now a matter of public record, and they are available. There are a few points in the document that have caused concern. When, when I think Trustee Banducci brought this to my attention, I, I said, okay, I'll, I'll dig into it. And on page three, the last line of the first paragraph indicates that the liquor license was included in the valuation. On page five, the last line on the page clearly states that the appraisal only includes real property and non-realty items are excluded from the analysis. So how do you resolve those two statements? Because it sounds like it's confusing. And, and I'll just say that the appraisal for retail and commercial property differs significantly what from, what we're familiar with, and that is, most of us are familiar with retail property that we own. And so the appraisal was very thorough and included the valuation of the property under several different scenarios. One of those scenarios was continuing operations as a bar restaurant. Okay? So when they're considering the value of this rest, of this, of the Fort Ground Grill as a bar or a restaurant, they had to include the liquor license in that valuation estimate. But it was not included in the valuation of the property because it is an old, unique license that is attached to the building and is not transferable. So it, it, so it is a strange situation, but it was not included in the appraisal or the final valuation of the property. The rental agreement is included with the appraisal document, and I've heard discussions and several reports in, in different media outlets that the lease would end at the end of summer. But the actual agreement says it requires a 60-day notice by either party. So at the conclusion of the 60 days, the operator, whoever's running the restaurant, must hand over, and I, I don't know exactly what this means, but a broom-clean building with, in an empty shell and clean grease taps. And if you've ever worked in a restaurant, I have, that is an important caveat. So, so that, those are the, those are the items, and I, I hope that clears it up. It is absolutely clear in the agreement, and our Vice President for Admin and Finance has checked back with the, with the appraisal company, and, and it is absolutely 100% clear that the liquor license is not included in the valuation of the property, and it cannot be transferred. So when we choose to shut that place down and the liquor license goes away, it cannot be reignited, it cannot be sold or transferred to anyone, it's done, end of story. And, and it's old enough, that, that is old enough apparently, that when, when Ms. Garcia has gone back to ask the experts, they're kind of scratching their heads because it's not something that they're familiar with. It is non-transferable, it is stuck to the building, and if we level the building, it's the, the liquor license goes with it. Okay. Another question that came up was on the ombudsman. In the June meeting, the topic was tabled until not later than October, so we've got another month before we need to bring that up. But during that CME meeting, there was a suggestion to take the ombudsman program from the University of Idaho and essentially adopt the policy to fit NIC. U of I's ombudsman program is currently done through a contract service with a professor by the name of Batha Beal Matombene from Binghamton, New York. Several members of the staff have reached out to her. She's been very Several members of the staff have reached out to her, she's been very helpful. I reached out to her yesterday. But they don't have a policy. They have contracted, subcontracted this program out to somebody in New York to run for them. And I quite frankly, don't think that that's a model that we want to follow. The ombudsman office deals, some of the things they do is absolutely what every ombudsman will do, and that is, they deal with conflict resolution, media coaching, and internal leadership development. And according to their last published report, which is where you can get more information than if you looked at their policy, that they don't have one. Their, their last published report, the primary purpose of the ombudsman office is to assist members of the university community with resolving their own problems or conflicts informally and at the lowest level possible by providing a safe place where individuals can speak confidentially and candidly about their issues of concern. And I, and again, I have reached out to them and they're willing to help us put a policy together and we'll work on doing that by October. But I've also reached out to several community college presidents that I am familiar with back in Virginia. I will reach out to others here. Given the size of our institution and the number of employees and students, it's probably more appropriate for us to build our own ombudsman program around existing structures and not contract those services out or create another position that we have to fund separately. Ombudsman services for employees are currently addressed by our Chief of HR Officer and student issues are addressed by our Dean of Students. For the purposes of these matters, they are able to act in much the same way an ombudsman might. They are confidential as the law allows, they are impartial, neutral in all matters, and they attempt to address the issues informally and at the lowest level possible. And they are independent. As with the ombudsman or the IG that you might be familiar with, their authority is derived from the president and they have a direct link back to the president for matters related to the ombudsman. An area that we are working on to resolve is what to do when the complaint happened, might happen to be against the Chief HR Officer or the Dean of Students, in the case of students specifically, or against me as the president. And with this in mind, there are several policy documents that we are reviewing regarding Title IX, student complaints, which are 5.16 dated April of 2019, and employee grievances, which are 03.02.23.01 and 3.02.23 that date back to 1998. So those policies clearly need to be updated. We will work on updating those policies and get them out to the board for consideration as soon as possible. They will need to go through the process internally before they get to the board. So issues and complaints against board members, something also needs to be addressed that is included in the board conduct policy, which is a separate agenda item under unfinished business that we will address later tonight. Okay, next, insurance. Several folks asked about insurance. Many of you asked about insurance. ICrimp has agreed to provide coverage for NIC through September 30th, in other words, through the upcoming month. And our interim VP for Admin and Finance is currently working with Dusty Harris of Payne West Insurance to secure insurance coverage through a national carrier. They are working through a 40-page questionnaire that requires them to provide, respond to a lot of things about collecting and sharing financial statements, our budgets, our policies, and handbooks. And they are working through that whole process and anticipate securing coverage by September 1st, which would be effective on October 1st, when the ICrimp insurance runs out. And, and when that, as we work through that process, Ms. Garcia will be able to come back and prepare a complete report for you once we have that policy in place to go over an analysis of coverage and cost. Next, enrollment, recruiting, and marketing. And I, I'm not, we weren't sure if Cassie was going to come back to cover the, our current enrollment numbers or if Steve Kurtz is going to do that, Steve is going to do that. Okay. So you'll hear a standard enrollment update from Steve Kurtz later in the meeting. However, I wanted to share my thoughts on recruiting, enrollment, and marketing. The time to recruit college students starts early in the fall of their senior year in high school. Many colleges and universities offer early admission cycles in an effort to attract and enroll their top students. Those applications are typically due in November of the student's senior year. Application for the regular decision cycle are generally due starting in January and students are often expected to make decisions and deposits by May 1st. Okay? Keep those dates in mind. When I got here on August 1st, I have not seen a version of a recruiting and market strategy that puts us on this timeline in a competitive way. When I arrived on August 1st, I asked about enrollment, recruiting, and marketing. It was one of the first things I asked about. And, and that kicked off a flurry of activity. Some of it was already planned and some of it, I think, was a result of me asking those questions. I'll just say, we can't compete if we're not in the game. And we are stepping up our analysis, focusing our efforts where we can, make the greatest difference in the shortest amount of time, and eliminating barriers, pilot testing our messaging to students, parents, and the community. We have to be more responsive, nimble, and adaptive as a community college to meet the needs of our students and our community. It might not be perfect, but we will make significant strides in fixing this by December or before, because we have to come out swinging in January as the new Idaho College here to compete with everybody else that's now in the game. So that's an update. And again, you'll get a more static update and we'll have more thorough updates on, on what I think the board needs to have in order to really understand where we are in terms of recruiting and enrollment. Right now, you get a static snapshot and that doesn't really help you in making decisions and understanding the depth of the challenge. So searches. We, we've had a lot of churn over the past year, and this contributes to the efficient operation of the college and one of the key actions I have addressed in our accreditation report. I'm very happy to have Sarah Garcia on the team as our interim VP. However, and I would like to just appoint her as the, as the person, however, a search is required to select a permanent VP. Because we have such a strong internal candidate, I intend on having our HR manager manage the search and we will appoint a search committee and initiate that search as soon as possible. The other senior search is for the provost, vice president, whatever we're going to end up calling it, the senior academic, the chief academic officer. And when I arrived, I thought that that organizational structure of the provost was settled. And in talking with student services, faculty, and deans, I've figured out that it was, they sometimes have a feeling that it was imposed on them. So sometimes that's necessary, but we're going to take a bit of a different approach. So I've asked members of our faculty, student, student services, and the deans to pull together all three of those constituent groups early in September, come prepared with ideas and with the understanding that we will decide on a structure everyone can live with, define the job descriptions for those roles, and identify the stakeholders in attendance who will serve on those search committees. In one meeting, this is not going to be a drawn out affair, we're going to figure this out in one meeting. And I anticipate making this a national search for a number of reasons that I'll update you on in the September meeting. Other important searches include the registrar and the director of admissions. Those, we're starting the process for those and they will start as soon as possible. Several of you have asked for financials and I've learned that for the past four or five months, the financial statements were not provided. So the financial statements you will find in your packet and those will provide it, be provided from now on on a monthly basis. At probably on a quarterly basis, Ms. Garcia will prepare a presentation and cover that in a more thorough way, but you'll find the monthly financial reports are in your board packets from now on. Okay. Good news. I always like to end with good news. We have a lot of new faculty and staff on campus and that is great. The faculty, those folks, despite all the things you hear in the news, there is a sense of faith and trust when you have new faculty and staff show up ready for work and they're excited to be here. So I take a lot of encouragement from that and I'm excited to have those folks here. And the last thing is, I think it's the last thing. I was notified that Dwayne Huff, and I haven't met him yet, I don't know who he is. Dwayne Huff was recognized by Idaho State Board of Education as this year's innovative educator and he will receive a $500 honorary at the General Education Summit in October. And that concludes the President.
Are there any questions, trustee McKenzie?
Plenty of statements. Many things. One, you mentioned there's lots of faculty and staff turnover at NIC. And I would just like to point out back that even all the way back to the survey from 2018, it basically talks about a huge climate of fear and how employees are disappearing and that we have such a high turnover at NIC. So the same survey that's attacking Christie Wood for basically going around and campaigning for that 2018 year about basically not saying the truth of the climate on campus is basically, that's the change that this community is crying for. And let me just say, you mentioned yourself that you didn't think that it was possible or you didn't think it was wise to put agenda items on today. You're choosing to ignore policy because it doesn't meet your philosophy.
Actually, no. Check out Policy 2.01.03, that was last updated in May of 22. And it very explicitly says, board members, so I'm not, I understand that there may be traditions that differ from the policy, but the actual policy says trustees submit items through the chair and the chair and the president will confer. But the next line says the president will establish the agenda. So that's the policy. It was updated in May of 22. I'm following the policy. Check it out.
Same May.
I have it right here. I have it right here if you'd like to read it.
Sure, rip it out, give it to me.
Well, then I'd like to ask the follow on question then. Mr. Lyons. I'll wait, I'll wait. I've got a question on this one.
Trustee Banducci.
Then I'd ask Mr. Lyons, to what was he referencing when Kristi and Ken were never denied any topic on the agenda? And then we even have a copy of the letter, email that came from trustees, trustee Getty that he and trustee Bichette wanted to put something on. And Mr. Lyons made it very clear to us, his interpretation of the policy and the procedures and what we were doing and the custom, that if any two trustees, and I think we might have this even recorded or in writing, two trustees want to put an agenda item on the agenda, then it will go on the agenda. So I'd like to know what was, what was being referenced in all those instances over the last year or two that suddenly is different now in the circumstance?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Look, I have consistently, consistently, year after year, year after year, have referred every trustee to the policy on meetings. The policy on meetings has not changed for a long time.
Thank you.
What typically has happened is trustees would get together and what has happened recently and has happened in the past, they take their, their agenda items to the president and the president agrees or the president is able to talk them out of that agenda item or to make arrangements that will be in a different forum or maybe at a different meeting or it's agreed to be put on. So presidents have, have a, have a, a, a kind of a diplomatic challenge here to deal with trustees and to get the agenda items that are really relevant to the college on. And so that's a discussion that, that the trustees have with the president and that almost always involves the board chair involved in that process. So again, I think I consistently referred every trustee to the board policy on meetings because that is the rules that govern this board.
So, so let me make sure I'm understanding this. So if I'm board chair and two trustees submit an agenda item and I choose not to put it on there, then I can be exoriated in public. So that's okay. So it's just kind of a double standard here. So I was expected to do one thing. Interim President Sabaly was expected to put everything on the agenda as applied for, which he pretty well did. So we had prior rules before, then we're changing it. It's the majority change and there's some different folks in place. Now we're changing it back. I just want to make sure I understand the narrative here.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. The policy on meetings has not changed. Sometimes the, the practice of board members, when you were board chair, you took a more active role in, in setting the agenda and President Sabaly, I think, was, was supportive of that. Previous president, not so supportive on some issues. Regardless, the, the policy on meetings, I think, clearly says that the agenda comes through the president. Any trustee can submit a request for an agenda item through the president's office. And typically, the president and the board chair agree on what the agenda is going to be.
I don't need the president to interpret my agenda item, so.
I have the agenda for May 25th.
Excuse me, trustee McKenzie, would you like to speak?
I would.
Well, he actually had the floor and I asked the follow on question.
So I have the agenda for May 25th and I don't see 2.0103 on the agenda.
Before my time.
Well, it is before your time because I'm looking for the changes because I don't recall ever changing the part where agendas get on the board member because I would have remembered that. And I can show you example after example where policy goes back to May 10th when the three trustees were going to fire President Sabaly for political retribution immediately and put in Dr. Lita Burns. And then also November 29th, when former trustee Howard was demanding things on there and Ms. Chair Banducci is relying on Mr. Lyons. And I'm with you, I've been on there for numerous conversations. This is just one example where there's interpretation after interpretation that it's, oh, it's a gray area, right? And let me just look at your political views is basically what it boils down to. So, okay, you're welcome to your interpretation. So I think it's disgusting and I have more questions.
I will, I'll have the, the policy up if anybody wants to come up and look at it. I think the line I highlighted is, is absolutely clear. If, if it was interpreted differently before I arrived, I can't help that. I'll just, you know, with, with everything from now on, all I can do is say I will treat everyone absolutely fairly, equitably, and that, that I will follow policy. So that's all I can make promise. So what happened before I got here, what happened two years ago, I can't, I can't change history. All I can do is.
Is this a policy change that the board never voted on? Is this in the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, as I've consistently said, the policy on meetings has not changed in a long time. It is policy on meetings and I have referred trustees to review the policy on meetings on multiple occasions.
Chair Wolf. I have more questions, but I'll refer to Banducci's question.
Trustee Banducci.
I took a few notes while President Swain was speaking. Couple of things for clarification. The ombudsman, I'm not looking for a new age ombudsman, I'm looking for a classical model. The ombudsman needs to report to the board and have the power to compel. I do not want the ombudsman to be reporting to the president or a vice president and have no power to change things. You referenced the IG. The IG is not subject to the commander. When we finished our, well, we just did the nuclear operational rating inspection, we've done some other things, we can write up the commander too. So, no, we don't answer them. And, and there is a protocol, if there's a certain level, 06 or above, if there's a complaint, then we go to the higher headquarters and we bring in somebody. We had to bring a colonel in one time from Camp Murray to deal with such things. So, so no, I want them independent, I want them outside the chain of command, I want them to have the power to compel, and they need to report to the board. We're the ultimate authority.
That would violate the standards of the north, of the accredited bodies of higher education. It's not possible. It's, there's a difference between what the military does. I've got 26 years of experience, I'm very familiar with it. And ultimately, the IG always reports to a commander and executes the authority for a commander at that. So it may not be the base commander, the IG always operates under a commission.
Well, yeah, the IG chain of command.
Correct.
And we go all the way up to the IG general, but still, we're not, it's a different chain of command.
Right.
And everybody on that base is subject.
I absolutely understand it and the, the authority for an ombudsman comes from the president, has to.
No, that's interpretation.
It's not interpretation. That is what got, it's the governance issues of having the, something happen like this where it would go outside of the president and go to the board with authority to compel the president or someone else to do something that, that is why we got in trouble with a crediting body in the first place. Cannot happen, cannot happen.
All right, well, let's clarify one thing then about chain of command, Colonel. You work for the board.
Absolutely.
And you've misstated something. So for the clarity of everybody out there listening, as the legislature has designated So for the clarity of everybody out there listening, as the legislature has designated, the Board of Trustees are the ones that determine whether or not there is a mask mandate. We're also responsible for the the policy regarding diseases and contagious diseases and the pandemic and COVID and all the rest of that. And in fact, that was put to test and people about lost their minds because the president, on a Friday before classes started on a Monday, instituted a mask mandate, which put a lot of students in panic. The next week, the board rescinded that mask mandate per their authority as delegated by the legislature. So, sir, you do not have the power to put a mask mandate on or take it off.
I didn't say I did.
You're answering to people on emails that you are.
No, no, no. I said I never, I said I have no intention of imposing a mask mandate.
Well, sir, that gives the implication that you have the authority or the power to do so. That is out of your purview.
It was not the question. The question was, the question that was asked was, will you impose a mask mandate?
You're going to split hairs with me on this. You know how that looks right now. I just, okay, that's okay. The rental agreement, I specifically addressed, started that issue weeks ago. Sarah Garcia was supposed to, well, she did, she reached out to the folks because we had the 98 page appraisal, which we didn't have till after the vote. And I asked for clarification because there were some conflicting language in the contract. She was going to get back with me. The folks that did the appraisal had promised her to give her an update to that. I have yet to ever receive that. That's been a month now. And they were supposed to clarify that language because I asked what were the components? Because you gave several scenarios. One was an ongoing restaurant. What was the valuations and which one was the million dollars for? And of that, how much was land and how much was was the building? Because now we've talked about maybe raising that building. And so there's additional data there that I had requested that I still have never received. And and then I asked the question about the the rental agreement because since you alluded to it, I will address that, of why we're doing essentially a below market rental agreement for $1,200 a month. And originally, it sounded like, and maybe you should ask her what her impression was of this discussion, but it was going to be for two months. And then in the contract, it ends up being with a 60 day notice. And it was interesting how, from what I had understood in my discussions with her and what was presented to us at the board, that contract came out a little bit different and then it was painted even a little more different after the interview in the in the press. So I'm still waiting to get clarification on the couple, three questions that I asked so I could clearly understand how the appraisal was arrived at and what it included. So so that's a different issue there. And as far as as far as agenda items, we've danced around that. What I don't understand is why we keep changing what the customary policy and procedure, even to the point of, you and I had communication and I had, and we had talked, and I said, well, how about we get a draft a few days in advance of it being published so that there could be feedback, comments, we could see what's on the draft, we might add something, whatever. Because I had given you some items and I said, I hadn't seen anything, so just giving you what we would like to have in in advance. And then we never did get a draft. And it came out and late in the day, we were told the next morning that it would be published and the board books would be coming out. So either the agenda is going to be a collaborative effort and we're going to have input and we're going to talk through it, or you and David are just going to control this thing with Mark's cover and we're just going to fight this way until we come up one way or the other in November and then we're going to have a change in how we do these things. But I don't think that's the right way to do it. And it was, I will say, if nothing else, your predecessor bent over backwards to try to accommodate everybody and communicate with everybody. He really did. So I hope you can continue that that trend.
Chair Wold.
Trustee McKenzie, go ahead.
In the entrance to transparency, would you have the board secretary provide us an email with the links and videos of the May 25 meeting where we, the board amended this policy? Because I don't see it in the agenda. So I understand that's before your time. That's fine. But that's what the board secretary is for, to get us information we need. Would you please have?
Yep, absolutely.
Excellent. I have more to say unless somebody, you want to give somebody else a turn? I'll take it since you're in time. So even though people may not know the exact question to ask, I feel like our job is to educate them on what questions they're trying to get to for the information they're trying to get to. So somebody did email the Board of Trustees this past week and they even answered a follow on question I fully intend to respond to. I haven't had time to yet. But if the first question that was asked is if this upcoming semester, if there's any mask mandates or or health vaccines mandates coming down the pipe. And did any other board member respond to that community member that we work for? Trustee Burchett.
Yes, I did respond.
Excellent. Excellent. That's wonderful. And let's see. If people who are watching the board meeting, if they recalled, it was the board's decision actually to guidance to not just one trustee or not just one president, it was the board's consensus that the board conduct policy and the ombudsman policy would return together. And I think it was stated for September or October. And the reason why that was tied together is because board members who've been up here for more than four months are fully aware that a lot of community employees and students have communicated to trustees that they have abysmal confidence in human resources following policies. So you say that the ombudsman is the chief human resources. That that doesn't work for me. And it doesn't work for a lot of employees here. So you might think it's best to have it on the agenda, but what this year has proven over and over again, going back to the mask mandate, that the wisdom of five individuals comes to a better consensus decision than one individual, even if that individual is highly educated. So you say you want it in your president's report, but then that honestly limits what I can speak about when I want to address agenda topics. For example, I would love to educate the policy of how we have an activist lawyer in our midst right now, who's even said to me when I'm the assistant chair, you know, vice president chair, whatever, I forget the term, who's saying, I won't give you attorney client privilege between other trustees because he's communal representation unless, when he's asked. And then when I ask him the same question, he's claiming attorney client privilege. There's two standards and I can give you probably a long time of examples detailed with dates. There's a reason that ICRA is dropping NIC because of the lawsuits. Let's put it that way. So people do not trust the current processes that we have. That's why the board conduct policy was coming back together. I feel like we're the administration that essentially the former trustees who quit enables to continually disregard the employees that work here and their concerns. Go back to the 2018 student or staff and faculty survey reports. They were given to me after I got elected because people are crying out for change. Even in the May 2022 pursuant to board policy 2.0103, trustees Burchett and Getty not only put items on the agenda, but they called a special meeting. The the point of being a trustee is that you have a voice, not just the chair and not just the president. We empower the president to be a voice and be able to speak on behalf of the college. But being a trustee, you also have the same rights as every other trustee up here, including putting agendas items on the agenda. So I have one more question. So Dr. Swain, this is this is for you. To remind the public, so there was a complaint by former trustee Woods' organization about academic freedom. And they directed that to trustee Banducci's words as he was speaking as an individual and exercising his own First Amendment rights. We just heard similar First Amendment rights concerns on campus. And to me, I have grave concerns even definitely now still present. So Dr. Swain, my question is, on the Kevin Reichert podcast, you mentioned the concern about NWCCU's concern for academic freedom. Not only did President Sabaly actively defend academic freedom, even the former president McLennan defended it. And twice, NWCCU has found that complaint about academic freedom written by trustee Woods' organization unfounded. So are you not aware that the former president successfully defended that part of the complaint and NWCCU letter does not address any concern regarding academic freedom?
Did I make any claim to the contrary?
Yes, you're talking about on Kevin Reichert's podcast.
I said academic freedom is important. And it is, it was addressed in their complaint. It was.
What complaint? As in the trustee Woods' organization's complaint?
No, no, no.
That we found unfounded?
Yeah, coming back from.
Coming back from NWCCU, the letter of warning addresses academic freedom?
Yeah. I'll go back and read it.
It does not. And matter of fact, the onsite visit, the onsite visit, the first report had over 50 facts that had to be corrected and were properly corrected multiple times through the onsite visit. So if you read the actual, the NWCC response, it does not reference academic freedom. It references board governance. And the reason why is because we have board members who've quit who don't respect board decisions. And we don't follow policy getting agendas on. And it appears we even modify policy without board votes.
Mr. Chairman. Yes. So that the public understands, there were two responses from the the commission.
There's three.
There were two to start with. The first one was from the site visit committee and there was reference to academic freedom. The letter of warning did not respond or did not include it. But there were two. And if there were three, trustee McKenzie is going to have to enlighten me on whether the third one addressed academic freedom.
I think, if I may, sir.
Excuse me. Trustee.
Chair Wold.
Banducci.
Well, John, you and I have had this discussion before. We did this downstairs. Let's only reference what's current and what's accurate, okay? We made that agreement. We don't talk about the first report that had over 50 factual errors. We don't talk about the folks went, our folks went and presented. There was written response. There was oral response. There was corrections, came back, there was more discussion. And then at the end, there was the letter of warning. So most of what was written, we're not on probation, but people still like to run with that term. It was out in the newspaper or have it been on probation? No, we haven't. So please, use what's current, use what's true. The letter of warning really addresses only three things and two of them are really kind of a duplicate. So let's just go with what they actually gave us. What they actually said was colleges doing fine, teachers are doing fine. To make Sarah feel better, we're very fine financially, even though they attacked us. And I think that was a sore point, you know, in our whole one, one tenth of a percent on the bond issue. So staff is doing good, leadership is doing good. The only real issues they had was, hey, get a permanent president, get a fifth trustee, and it'd be nice if the trustees would play nicer together. So let's just keep it to what it is and let's not talk about all these other issues.
I think there were other senior, the the absence and departure of senior folks was also in the final report.
Are there any further questions regarding the president's report? Obviously, we had enough opportunity for you to speak to the items on the president's report, Greg. So I hope that we continue to have that opportunity for you every time at every meeting.
That I disagree with that, sir. I would have submitted agenda items to be included in the board books if they're on the agenda.
We're going to move on to the NIC Foundation report. There isn't one this. Foundation did not meet this last month. The month before, I was not in attendance. In the future, I will not be giving a foundation report. We're going to, there's no need for that. The foundation is a separate organization and things that are happening at the foundation can be shared by the president.
They have plenty of voice already.
Pardon? Are you, do you wish to speak?
Yes, I'll say it again. Do you want me to repeat that? The the foundation seems to have plenty of voice already.
I'm not sure.
I can explain.
We're going to move on to the consent agenda. We have minutes from June 22 and July 14. And we did have a request for adding the individual votes on the July 14. And as I remember, I thought we did it in a roll call, but if we did not, there were three positive votes of Sheik, Getty and Wold, two negative votes, Banducci and and McKenzie. So.
Can I have a request on the agenda as well?
Pardon?
On the minutes?
Yes.
Can it be noted that the board was not provided the oh, was it?
Appraisal.
Appraisal before we voted? We weren't?
Mr. Chairman.
We weren't? I would just like that noted.
Well, Mr. Chairman, yes. If we're going to note that, I think it would be also appropriate to note that the board was unable to muster the votes to go into executive session before the meeting where the agenda would or the appraisal would have been provided.
Yes, that'd be great. And if you'd also talk about maybe, what was the date? Was this, was this June 24th when it was coordinated before the votes? Can that go on the agenda too? On the minutes?
What is your question?
Well, we're talking about executive session, how we'd never went in an executive session to debate and to evaluate and to what we said when we started the interviews, that we're going to go into executive session and converse about the material we never provided to the public.
We talked about the significant relevance of all three people voting together every time.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Yes. I think my point was that that is information that is unnecessary to minutes. Minutes are normally very brief and they relate to the actions that was actually taken, subjects that have have come up and and the actions that are taken. They do not need to be a blow by blow of what happened during the meeting.
Certainly looks bad.
It's the action items, the votes, that is important. I'd like to move on into unfinished business, tab one. We have a board conduct policy that was actually put together with an ombudsman request that was tabled. And so I'd like a motion to remove them from the table.
Chair Wold.
Yeah.
I should say. You skip over that. You didn't. Will you approve the minutes?
Okay.
Maybe amend it to include the votes.
Okay.
Sorry, I need to interrupt on that one.
Go ahead, go ahead. Trustee Banducci.
That was all I was doing was bringing you up.
Go ahead. If I could, Mr. Chairman, on the consent agenda, I think what the board needs to do or or at least what the what on the consensus needs to be is the, at least the board chair needs to say, the the minutes are approved as amended to reflect the votes on on the that were taken at the meeting. The minutes are approved as changed and added with the votes on.
The secretary will update and get those out to the board so everybody knows.
Okay. Good, we'll move on to the consent agenda, to the unfinished business. I need a motion to remove this item from the table.
I would.
Go ahead. You spoke. I'll make a motion to move it.
Thank you. Is there a second? It's removed and seconded. A motion from the table is non-amendable and non-discussable. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Well, can we have discussion over?
A motion from the table is non-amendable.
I know, but.
Non-discussable. Non-discussable means no. I'm sorry.
Well, I was just wondering if it's going to actually follow the original board's guidance of coming back with. of coming back with the ombudsman program?
Just let's, let's get it out of the table.
I mean, because we didn't follow the board's guidance the last time, I'm just wondering what future actions are going to take. I mean, it seems like you two are making the board agenda, so maybe you can enlighten us before we vote?
You're bringing it off the table so it can be discussed again. That's all that bringing it off the table does. Didn't you go to a conference on Robert's rules? I thought you were going to be the person that understood Robert's rules, Greg. It's removed and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's have a roll call votes. Pete?
Aye, yes.
Todd?
Aye.
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 Greg?
Aye.
Okay. Now, the motion is off the table. My recommendation is that we separate the two issues, that we deal with the board conduct policy separately and do it tonight. So I would like a motion to accept the board policy as, as you have it in your folders at this time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, trustee.
I would move that we move forward with the board conduct policy as presented, with amendment.
With amendment?
With the amendment, with the amendment, as amended, as amended, in red.
Yes, I got you. Is there a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have some. Trustee Banducci can go.
Trustee Banducci?
That was pretty smooth, Chair. You don't want to tell us what you're thinking, or what you're planning, or how that might look on a future agenda. So we take it off, but then you come right back at it, not like that wasn't pre-planned. Sometimes it seems so obvious. I love you, Pete, but you've only spoken about four times in three meetings, and every time you've read your script, which is what you've been told to say. And everything's been orchestrated. And you guys have voted in lockstep, every single vote. There's not been one vote where the three of you haven't been together. If Greg and Michael and I had done that, people would have gone crazy. But that, that's not the case. We were all over the board. Here's the deal. This, this institution has been around since, what, 1933, I believe? And up until about the last couple of years, there had never been a board conduct policy. But yet, we speak about it with such urgency and in such tones that this board is incapable of operating as a board without such policy that's been there and not been there and been there, and how it was created really as a weapon against me originally by a few small-minded people. So I just, I just want to make that clear to everybody. We act like, oh, my gosh, we've got to have this policy, this conduct policy, or this board cannot function. But yet, for the vast majority of the history of this college, except just this much of it, there has been no such thing as a board conduct policy. And while the board has the ability to police itself, there's no such requirement. And you're going to artificially trying to put in ways to enforce this, and all you're going to do is open yourself up and subject yourself to more criticism, because it's just going to appear to be political. And wow, retribution if you don't like it. So go ahead, do what you can do. You can ram it through, three to two. But the optics are terrible. Everybody's seeing this, and this is on, this is on the film now. And these are the sorts of things that will keep coming back. And you guys won't, it's going to hang around your neck like a millstone when you vote for this. And everything that you're doing between now and November, it's what's going to be in the campaign. So just remember that. Just a small, small note. So that's my comment.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie?
I find it immensely coordinated, colluded, scheduled, that to the day, I was asking for information, very basic information, such as like, Mr. Lyons, can I have your billing statements for the past two months, just so I can see what you've been charging and billing to? And then he refuses to even give me that under the guise of attorney-client privilege and having to review that.
Trustee McKenzie, can you limit your statement to the motion before us?
Yes, referring to the gag policy, 2.010, or the, the, yes. This is exactly, because it's all about controlling information. That's what it is. So we're taking the word confidential out of this policy. And you would think, as it was explained to me when it comes to this board conduct policy, is it's all about making sure the board has the right information. And so even, you don't want individual employees talking to like one trustee, because then what if they're not fed the right information, right? So even when an employee at this college uses public speaking time, like public comment minutes, so the whole board gets the same information, they still get written up. Because what it is, is about vetted, right, truthful information going to trustees that one person can control. And that's essentially the president. And that's why Mr. Lyons waited to August 1st to respond and deny, initially deny.
Is there any further discussion?
They don't put things on the agenda, so we can't even bring it to fix these problems. Hold on, there's something I want to say, and I wrote it down. I'm going to put it right here.
Could you limit your statement to the motion on the floor?
This board conduct policy, the only reason why it came about was because supposedly Todd Banducci assaulted people. But if you actually look at records, we either did a Title IX violation and violated federal law, or trustee Woods is a complete liar, and this board conduct policy is completely not needed. Because here's the deal. If you public records request this institution, which many people have done, you'll find that there is zero assault by trustee Banducci. So it's either or, and what is it? And the facts don't go with liars. So this board conduct policy is purely political. It's purely about stifling dissent, which there is massive dissent and discontent with the status quo, which is why three new board members got elected. Even in President Sibbali's communication with NWCCU, he said the problems here can only be solved through political means, which is why the accreditation agency gave us well beyond the November election to get our house in order. These appointed trustees, it was supposed to be an executive session, but the votes didn't happen. But they, President Sibbali had to explain to them, they're providing the justification and the urge from the community due to the accreditation concerns, not really knowing what they were talking about. And he basically said, it's not academic freedom. He explained it to them then, and they maybe chose not to hear him. It's board governance, and we have plenty of time.
Is there any further discussion? I'll call for the question for the vote. We'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Rochette?
Yes.
Trustee Banducci?
Nay.
Trustee Wold, yes. Trustee Yeti?
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie?
No.
The motion is passed three to two. We'll move on to new business.
Can I say something? Can I just say something about that agenda topic?
Do you have a comment that is pertinent?
Yes.
I guess we always have to listen. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I would just like to say that I don't have confidence in NIC's policies and procedures, and I don't think they're no longer working. So I got grave concern for employees and students at this college. That's why I've requested for the ombuds program and an ombudsman program that isn't a mere puppet of the president of the day. Even before this board's agenda formulation, there's two sets of rules on campus. And I feel like free speech is dead, and as passing this policy just shows. Our community is engaged in holding one another accountable, and they will in November. So this board is intentionally removing NIC's ability to step up and confidentially lead through these difficult times. Even when they choose to do it publicly during public comment, they get written up for their, in their personnel record. So we no longer have a variety of methods of oversight that I have faith in. I don't. And I've, I'm neither the power to timely bring agenda items to fix the problem. And I definitely don't have the votes, because they seem to all been predetermined before the meeting even starts. So the hurt and anger amongst our community, it's very real. And it's exasperated by continually ignoring our community. The community response is evident by the double-digit drops in attendance, we're soon going to learn about. We're here because of an unwillingness to work together. And that is demonstrated by ignoring trustees in the minority. And I would say, you only had two trustees even respond to community members' questions. So we work for the community, and I feel like we're failing them. So help me in November.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, trustee Yeti?
Would trustee McKenzie yield to an inquiry?
Sure.
Were trustee McKenzie, were the two votes against all these things also orchestrated?
To be honest, I don't talk to that guy. I don't. I work more, I work so many hours, and I have a family to where this is just, like, to be honest, President Swain, I haven't read your update from Saturday morning. I intend to get to it. And I will, like, tomorrow. It's on the priority list, but no. And the way that guy talks, he continually goes on the phone. So no, it's.
If I may respond to that, sir.
Yes, trustee Banducci.
Just for your edification, Greg and I did not talk prior to this meeting. At all.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to go on record stating that neither you nor trustee Rochette, nor I had a conversation either before this meeting.
Not a one. Let's move on to new business. We have an action item, and Mark Lyon, would you lead us through that, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Unfortunately, there was an error made by the college attorney in the final draft of the president's contract. And that would be me, and I take responsibility for that. Let me give you a little background here. And this is a very narrow issue, and it's, it's really to correct a Scrivener's error. The employment contract for the college president was approved by this board at the July meeting. And I explained, as I think was discussed at that meeting, I explained that one of the things that was different in this contract was that the termination without cause section had been removed, and that the term, there was a termination for cause that was still included. So when I went back and, and that was discussed with the parties, and with the president candidate at the time, and Chairman Wold, as this board had authorized me to work with Chairman Wold to negotiate the final contract. So I explained this contract. However, unfortunately, and I apologize for this, in coming up with the final version to be signed, I inadvertently, apparently grabbed a, a part of section 12.1 and put it in that was in error. So what, what is a Scrivener error on my part, is it the, it included the language by either party without cause, and it was intended, and originally at one time, read by the president without cause. So what I'm asking here is for the board to approve a correction of that Scrivener error. And really, what I am asking for the board to do is to move to clarify and correct the president's employment contract by striking the words either party from section 12.1 and replacing them with the words the president, and that the correction be acknowledged by the president and the board chair. That's the motion I'm asking for.
Can I have that motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Discussion on this item was carried out extensively at the last meeting, but trustee Banducci, go ahead.
Two points to start with. One is, we have normal and customary contracts. I have them going all the way back, 10, 15 years. In fact, I have them on my desktop on my computer. Never before has there been the omission of the ability for the board to also dismiss without cause. And then, for the first time ever, for cause, they've called it out that it has to be a supermajority of at least four votes instead of a simple majority. I don't know legally how you get away with that, how you can, how you can tie the hands of a future board, that a majority of the board can make a vote and it doesn't have authority. So I guess that one could be tested legally, I guess, at some point. I don't understand how that can be done. But I have a couple other problems with this. We did talk about it, and I asked very specifically, Dr. Swain is going to be on board, ready to go, boots on the ground on one August, and not have to be anything else. He's here full-time. I said, or should we make the contract start on September 1? And at least two times, the affirmative was given, oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes. Okay. What I want to note is that we have stuck in there 10 days of non-chargeable leave, which if you pack weekends on each side of that, could be up to 16 days. So half a month, I'm going to pay for the guy that I'm paying almost $300,000 for. So we've jumped up the money again, by the way. We'd reset it all the way back to 180 with the interim president. And now we're back up to more, really, probably than we were with Rick, really great. So now we're way up here again. And we've put a contract in where there's, we're stuck for three years, and they've tried to make it ironclad. So whatever happens, he's going to get his money. So they paid for his retirement back to Idaho, whatever happens, however long he's the president. And then, I've got the note here, says, I'm planning to fly back to Virginia at the end of August to collect my wife, dog, and whatever remains of our household goods. Will be driving my truck and pulling the U-Haul. The whole family should be in Corlaine hopefully by Labor Day weekend. I anticipate back in the office on Tuesday, September 6. So my question is, when you said yes, when I said he was ready to go and boots on the ground and would not have to be gone again on August 1st, were you lying? Were you incompetent? Were you just confused? Or were you just mistaken? Because I asked it twice, and there were multiple affirmatives given to that question. And I'm going to hold you boys to that, because I asked it very, very plainly and very clearly, and I asked it a second time, just to be sure that I asked it correctly. Okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Lyon?
The, it is not appropriate to relitigate this. This was all discussed.
I'll just bring it for the public, because it makes you look bad. Because you and I talked, Mark, you have taken a position. You told me, come on, we're going to have this talk right now. Todd, I'm 68, I don't need the money, I'm going to do what I wanted.
Please, please.
You've made it very clear, sir, that Greg has been very critical of you, and I have tried to stand in the.
Please let him finish speaking.
So, he's got a legitimate question. I mean.
We have already discussed all of these issues a month ago. And so the board has already.
They protect each other. Do you notice this?
And this is a very narrow question. Will the board agree to correct this Scrivener error? This is my fault, my responsibility. I take, it's embarrassing to me. But this is not the time to relitigate the entire contract. So we should focus, are we, is on the.
I have a question.
Scrivener error.
Trustee McKenzie?
Does this board speak with one voice, like when it makes a decision?
Once a decision is made, yes, it's one voice.
So, but.
Whether the vote is 5-0, 4-1, 3-2, whatever, it's one voice. Hopefully, we can all join together then.
The contract says, like, there's a vote tally, though. So like, if you look at, I mean, just statutes and stuff, like, I just, that's what, that's what I'm just concerned about. I'm fine with everything, but I just, I've never seen a board's voice partially represented by a, by a vote count.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? Not appearing, I'll call for the question.
Lawyer can whitewash anything, apparently.
I'll call for the question, and again, we will have a roll call vote. Pete?
Aye.
Todd?
Nay.
I vote yes.
Aye.
No.
Greg, the vote is three to two, and the change has been made.
Again, the public needs to know.
So I just want to point, apparently, the exact question.
Are you asking to speak?
Sure, can I speak?
Yes.
So just like somebody emailed a question, it might have been a word or two off the exact answer. Apparently, we were a word or two off getting the exact answer, the truthful answer of like, if somebody was still moving here or not. So I don't know what question we should have asked to find out if somebody was still moving here, but. moving here, but, uh, because, I mean, that's what we were trying to find out and that's, I feel like Trustee Banducci is evidently pointing out, is like, people knew then, even in the current president knew then, and, but we didn't find out at that board meeting when we were voting, when the, when the date could have been changed easily. So, but, and the reason why is because.
Is your complaint that he was not here August 1st? I was asked by you specifically, is he going to be boots on the ground August 1st? And I answered yes.
Oh, that's not, that's disingenuous. I asked further in the question, I said, going to be here full-time, ready to go and not going to be gone. Come on, get the tape, David, now you're splitting hairs. You know, I asked the full question, I asked it a second time. Don't do that to yourself, it diminishes you. You know the question I asked, don't try to evade and give that you gave a weasel answer. That doesn't work.
Thank you.
Yeah. You know you're wrong, sir. Respectfully, you know you're wrong and you can't contrive that answer to make it fit.
The next item on the agenda, I would like a motion to give, to award emeritus status, trustee status to Christie Wood. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded, is there a discussion?
I have something to say.
Trustee McKenzie?
So, Trustee Burchett, you do realize that you were of the zone five candidates when we were, you were only trustee Howard's and trustee Wood's selection out of all of them. They wouldn't go for anybody else but you. Do you remember that?
I do remember that.
So essentially, I have the wording here, if you don't mind me, she's endorsed, the three of you as doing a fabulous job and endorsed you for your reelection. Do you embrace that endorsement of her? You want me to read the wording?
He's making a point.
Okay, stand by. I believe in the solid leadership of trustees Wold, Burchett, and Getty, and new president Dr. Nick Swain, to work with the other two trustees and change the course for the better. This is the best interest of our students and of our entire community. This is from Christie's, my turn.
Trustee McKenzie, what is your point? We're discussing whether or not to award emeritus status, what is your point?
I'm wondering, Trustee Burchett, that if I read to you, can I, can I read to you what somebody from the student survey 2018 said and if you still agree with your second of this motion towards, moving towards? I wasn't writing so many things, it'd be a lot easier. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I value your time as much as mine.
Trustee McKenzie, are you attacking trustee Boucher? Or are you trying to say yes or no that we should award emeritus status?
I'm trying to make, give him.
I don't understand where you're coming from. I hope that you're not attacking another board member.
No, I'm trying to provide history and context to people who are voting for somebody that half of this college despises for lying to the community and misrepresenting the fear and hate. Public record me and prove me wrong. These are other people who works here.
Does the audience over here get advised by the board?
Only when they're harassing conservative trustees.
Yeah, they are supposed to be quiet. And we've had that when I was the chair, that was an issue.
You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. Would you please hold down your, your.
I'll say something. I'll walk out.
You may finish.
You can do the same.
Oh, my goodness. Public records. Oh, it's prior surveys. You would think I would have prepared for this moment more.
The mind of the cluttered genius. Here we go. Chair Wold.
Trustee Banducci, yes.
Well, trustee McKenzie is looking up his reference. May I make a, just a very short comment?
Aye.
And then give him some time to look so we're not sitting here in silence. We received a couple emails, one to the board and, uh, and one to myself, and there were other comments and notes regarding this topic. And it was interesting to watch the Facebook posts and, and Facebook pages and the different things going on. My comment would be pretty straightforward, though. As, as we look and we heard some folks speak about it during public comment is, former trustee Wood and some of her compatriots were content with whatever it took, whatever means were justified to achieve the end of, basically coming at me, even if it included resigning and, and trying to burn down the college. Now, to me, it's just antithetical to even be recognizing her service to NIC based on that, on that premise of what just recently occurred. And it's interesting, trustee McKenzie is going to reference the 2018 survey, which I also have a copy of, and it was not very flattering to her, by the way. I think he's trying to give some context and, and share with trustee Burchett, maybe some other people said four years ago. And it's also the question of, with the endorsement and with the actions that she took and the resignation and the, and the behind-the-scenes communications that were going on, and I won't start naming names, but some of the folks even up here at this table, all the rest, is it a conflict of interest for those of you here to now be voting for her in the affirmative? Is your, is your vote now being compromised because of what has occurred over the last six, eight months and even what's been said publicly? If, if he's endorsed by her for his election and then he turns around and votes for her, then some might think that that's a compromised vote and question, you know, the rationale behind it and the validity of it and, and the pretenses and, and the why. So I just throw that out there.
I've, I've found this statement.
And trustee McKenzie, I think it's your turn.
Are you ready now?
I'm ready. Appreciate everyone's patience. So last year, in my February 2021 statement, a long time ago, responding to trustee Wood's despicable and smirking campaign against trustee Banducci, I provided a 2014 study, so that's a long time ago, nine years ago, from American Council of Trustees and Alumni that determined a number of college trustees, they were not doing their job and that this failure was diminishing the value of higher education. So North Idaho College has not escaped the same damage of college trustees failing in their proper oversight role in governance. That occurred before and even during my tenure. North Idaho's college's own December 2018 employee feedback survey results analysis report, public records me, largely exemplifies this damage from trustee's lack of job and expresses NIC's own desire for improvements with, listen to this, 90.6% of the participants supporting and requesting administrators be evaluated and the results be presented to the NIC Board of Trustees. So may I remind you that the administration in place during the 2018 employee survey consisted of the three vice presidents and the former president, all no longer at NIC. This was never done, presented to the board of trustees, and these results were instead buried by the former administrations. So I obtained copies of this 2018 survey report because several employees, they were disgusted with the lie and smear campaign engineered by trustee Wood and her numerous partisan allies at the change that the fellow board members, when we were elected, that we were inducing, positive changes. I encourage everyone to read the full survey results, but here's, here's some highlights, and these are comments, all right? Thank you. So I quote, "Thank you for the survey. Since we don't have an opportunity to review the administration, since they took that away from us, I'm going to do it now. It is outrageous for the president to get in front of the staff assembly and blame us for the 360 review to cost $50,000. They talked about the need to evaluate administrators in president's council last fall. They know they are supposed to follow policy, but didn't." Sound familiar? "Then the president chastised staff for bringing this resolution." Exclamation marks. "The only reason this is finally being discussed is because you, the board, brought this resolution. The only reason we're asking for this policy to be followed is because there is a need. NIC is a place of fear now." 2018. "Good-loved employees who have been here for dozens of years have just disappeared. Rumors fly that they are monitoring our emails. Nothing gets done except for more administration added to the top and committees on top of committees. This administration is the worst part of academia with some Gestapo tactics on top. All the good employees have either been fired or they're on their way out because this place is going down the tubes. Listening to Christie Wood quoting talk about the great morale on campus last summer was painful since it is the exact opposite. Just who has she been talking to?" Question mark. "No one I know on campus." That's response ID 141 of some brave person who's willing to stick their neck out. More checks and balances prior to letting firing employees go, that's on page six. "The vertical organization structure has been instituted and fortified at NIC in the last 10 years has served to insulate upper administration from measures of accountability, communication, and transparency, especially in the instructional vein. It has served to minimize the power and voice of division chairs without relieving workload or stress and effectively sabotaged faculty influence." Here's another quote. "There needs to be some accountability for this administration. If the trustees won't do it, I guess we can vote them out." They did. Reminder, that's what the community at large did in 2020 November election. So I can, I got like three more pages, so you can, if anyone else wants to say anything, I got a lot. "Those who make decisions should take responsibility for them. The findings suggest accountability and transparency are therefore known concerns among all employee groups. 28% of comments indicate leadership can present a barrier, either through poor guidance and communication, delayed decision-making, micromanagement, or failure to hold staff accountable." Here's a great one. Top-heavy administration. So I just want to remind everyone, last year, because of President Sibalie's choices of instituting a VP, a provost, he was able to.
Mr. Chairman, I call for the question.
Hand out $250,000 in, to employee bonuses through salary salvage alone. $250,000. The average wage at NIC is $60,000.
Trustee McKenzie?
Our president makes north of $330,000.
I think, I think we've given you adequate time to explain what you wanted to explain. I would like to make a brief statement. I don't want to share, often make statements, but when I joined this board, I was hoping that there could be some, some kindness, some respect, respect of each other, respect of other individuals. And so I'm asking all of you to please try to respect each other, respect past trustees, respect anybody here who's coming to, to listen to us. So I, I think we've heard enough of what you had to say.
May I respond to what you just said? I'd even read trustee Wood's own words to you, that employee, that trustees are supposed to be criticized. And I can even go to a March 24th email the same year.
We have already acted on that.
Also, in 1964, I believe it's a Supreme Court decision where elected officials are supposed to be criticized so our government can improve.
Is, is there any way that I can get you to stop?
You can, one, return my phone calls when I call you.
You never, never called me.
Yes, I have. I can show you the minutes, sir, on my phone.
David, Chair Wold. To your point, you and I started this, you and I had a meeting for over two hours in my office. And I thought it was very productive, I thought it was a fair meeting. We kind of coined it as a negotiation. Some of the ideals we discussed, I don't, I don't feel have been lived up to. Let me just say that. And there's some things I think you got, you had good intentions, but I think you've been vetoed a little bit. And when you left and even when I talked to you about a couple other things that we talked about, even some mentoring, and I think somewhere you wanted to take my suggestion, but you, for whatever reason, you didn't. So I would express a disappointment on, you and I started in a place, but that path diverged, sir. If it comes back, I think the tenor will change. But you and I started here and I've kept going this way, but you've, you've been pulled. And I just think that's the reality.
I, I accept your comments.
Okay.
I have one more thing to say to the community. And for those who vote, for the trustees up here who are voting to support the emeritus status for trustee Wood, they are voting to retain and empower a culture that where people, they say it's wise to remain silent for fear of reprisal. That is the trusteeship that trustee Wood has.
Her legacy.
Her legacy of this area. You are well-informed, you are embracing her results. And I am telling you, from my perspective, sitting in executive session, hearing from student complaints, hearing the, watching the former administration and what she empowered, it's abysmal.
Mr. Chairman, for the second time, I call for the question.
I think we've already voted. Have we voted? Okay. I got lost in your dialogue. The roll call vote for Pete?
Aye.
Todd?
No way.
Is that a no?
That would be a nay.
Me, yes.
Aye.
A most definite no.
Let's talk about her ex-husband while you're at it. There's all sorts of good things. She throws a lot of.
What would that police report say? Sex, public?
We're going to move on to discussion of upcoming agendas. Dr. Swain, am I right?
So, so I have a, there, there will be a number of upcoming agenda items. For example, we were, we are going to do a bunch of work on the recruiting, retention, and marketing plans. We'll bring those to you. I have, we'll, we'll update on insurance and the insurance plan, we should have that by the September meeting. And I will update you on searches and the organizational structure that we decide on. And I, I do not anticipate a, a change in the number of administrators as we try to sort out what, what, what the, the faculty, staff, and, and deans want to have for that. We're not going to add administration to the, to the mix. So those are, those are upcoming agenda items that we will be addressing, hopefully in September, but pending update.
Thank you. Informational items, enrollment update. Dr. Silvas.
It's going to be Dr. Chris.
Oh, excuse me.
It had been established earlier.
Had to figure out where to stand, it's, it's late. But unfortunately, well, good, good evening, everybody. Just wanted, I wish I had better news to share with you. The college is experiencing a decline in enrollment with both headcount and credit hours. The college's headcount is currently at 3,775 students, that's down 10.38%. And 37,385 credit hours, that's down 9.7%. Some good news to report is that enrollment from students with membership with Western Undergraduate Exchange, which is part of the WICHE, is up from a year ago. And out-of-state enrollment, especially from the state of Washington, is just slightly down and those have a little bit bigger budget impacts. So that's some good news to report. And as the trustees heard earlier, there's some enthusiasm with dual credit as we begin enrollment. And so we're looking forward to that. And so there's still enrollment to come as well as the work with Provost Silvas and the rest of the team with the late start classes that are going on. They'll be reaching out to more students. And eventually, it may not impact our census enrollment since some of these classes start later, but yeah, it will definitely impact our end of term. But wanted to provide you all just interesting information about the unintended consequences with our, our current sanction. And I just wanted to show you something really quick. And we just found. And we just found out recently that our veterans, can you all see this? I mean, if you're like me, I need this to get a little larger.
I screamed and screamed from the mountain and here's the results.
So right here, we have just an unintended consequence when we have our veterans taking a look at our GI Bill comparison tool website. They do list a college as having a, a warning. Then when the, the potential student clicks on it, it lists that, a very, very statement that we disagree with. And we're going to try to correct this, be reaching out to NWCCU to see if there's a way that they can help us with this. But it says that the school's accreditation has been taken away and is under appeal, or the school has been placed on probation because it doesn't meet the acceptable levels of quality. And that statement isn't necessi, it is not true at all. And, but yet we have potential students looking at this. But it's something we would like to, to correct.
Yeah, you portray that narrative in the press long enough. That's what happens. Really smart, everybody. I hope you feel good. You shot yourselves in the foot.
Chair Wald, I have a question.
Yes. Trustee McKenzie.
So, Dr. Kurtz, a question for you. Or President Sabaly and, or President, Dr. Swain and Dr. Kurtz. Let's say this administration and board of trustees does 100, everything percent wrong through March of next year. Okay, which obviously we are absolutely trying to do our best that we can. And we have a president who's trying to do his best is, and so they come visit us again in, in March. And then they say, we're not going to give, do your accreditation again, which is not the plan at all. Our credits, we're still allowed to teach out current students, correct?
Mr. Chairman, trustee McKenzie, there are several steps that would take place before we would get to that level.
Yes, true.
And the first one is, and I, I can't speak for NWCCU. I can only speak from my experience. And the, 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 most likely, the, the strongest outcome that could come out of, with our mid-cycle visit is a show cause.
Yes.
And that means they would give us a, a small period of time to correct. And it's like your, it's like our last chance.
But I'm, I'm hearing from newspapers and stuff of kids in coffee shops not wanting to go this semester because they're worried about this semester's credits for accreditation. And I would love for some competent person who knows accreditation to say that that concern is hogwash and that your credits are great. Go to NIC.
Absolutely. And.
You can use the word hogwash.
Institutions either accredited or they're not. We're not fully accredited. We're not partially accredited. We're fully accredited, we're, here I am just saying fully. But we're either accredited or we're not. Accredited means we can, and this is very important for us to operate, is federal financial aid. And also the transferability of credits, the receiving of transfer credits from other institutions.
That'd be the articulation agreements, correct?
Yes, yes. They would help support, if, if we lose accreditation, then the articulate, it just wouldn't be good. But the, the authority is the ability for us to, to remain as members of NWCCU. And in that case, we are approved by the federal government for really title, title for financial aid. And that's the acceptable standard that other institutions of higher ed look at when evaluating credits from other institutions.
Thank you, Dr. Kurtz. I appreciate setting the community's nerves at ease about accreditation.
President Swain?
I would like to say one thing and then, and I've, I updated you all in your, in the report that I sent to trustees on Saturday. And that is, over the past two weeks, I've spoken to Scott Green, the president of U of I, and to Cynthia Pembroke, the president of LCSC. And in both cases, I, I said, look, we, we're, we tried. We went to NWCCU and asked them to release a statement saying, we're making good progress. And they refused. So I said, okay, Plan B is, I go to the folks that are receiving our students and, and get them to make a statement. In both cases, those presidents said, Nick, I will, you put the words in my mouth. I will say whatever you want. There's never been a question about the quality of instruction, the quality of learning, or the quality of your students. We will take all you can get. And, and what's more, we need them. Our enrollments are down at both of those institutions and largely because we didn't transfer enough students to them. And so they are excited to have our students. They value our students. And I think that the public really needs to understand that, that is, the, the value of our students in terms of transfer is, is not questioned by anyone in the state. And I would say probably within the region would be not, not an issue.
One question too about the accreditation process. Complaints going to NWCCU, two questions actually. Complaints going to NWCCU, aren't they supposed to be addressed to the local university first? And was the complaint stemming from trustee Wood's organizations, were they sent to NIC first according to NWCCU policy?
Mr. Chairman, trustee McKenzie, we eventually received the letter of complaints, both letters.
After we heard from NWCCU and was supposed to, it's supposed to be attempted to be addressed by NIC, and NIC first, correct?
Mr. Chairman, trustee McKenzie, the first letter was a letter of inquiry. That happened early last year and we responded. And as a result, the commission asked us for an ad hoc report that was supposed to be due August 1st. And, and I'm glad that wasn't the case. The second complaint letter led to a, a visit, a special evaluation visit in January 2022. And that resulted in the letter of action at where we are now.
One, one more thing about that is NWCCU violated their own policies twice. One, the first, that stemmed, originated the letter of inquiry, that was addressed to NWCCU first. And the board, NIC, never saw that. Because if we did, we could inform them that, of what Mark Lyons has been saying in executive session all along. And second off this time for the fact finding visit, the first two versions of the report that were corrected, there was 50 errors of facts that was corrected. That report was made public, but that also violates NWCCU's own policy because it's supposed to be given to NIC so we can correct those factual errors before it gets out to the public so people don't use it for campaigning talking points. Thank you.
Trustee Van Dushey?
A couple of things. Ones I follow on to trustee McKenzie, there was some violations of policy because there were not just the two complaints that Tony Stewart authored with help from many. But there were some complaints that came internally from our own organization. And those clearly violated policy. And I, I'm not sure how those were dealt with or not, but I would hope that that would never occur again. Couple of other thoughts. We're excited about dual enrollment. It's a great program. I totally support it and it's great for parents and it's great for the students. But what people have to realize is when we do dual enrollment, we're cannibalizing ourselves because we're only getting a fraction of the amount that we would get with regular tuition. The, the rate that's reimbursed for dual enrollment is significantly lower than the normal tuition a student pays, even in district, i.e. Cootney County, our taxing district. So instead of getting those kids as freshmen and sophomores where they'd be paying this tuition rate, we're getting them as juniors and seniors and they're paying this tuition rate. So people have to understand the higher our dual enrollment is, the less money we're going to get for those students over their two or three year career here at this community college. And what we've done is then we move them on to the U of I and LCSC. And so they really don't care because they normally don't get them till after two or three years. So they don't care how much they paid us for those two or three years. They're going to get them as a, as a junior equivalent or junior status, junior standing, however they term that. I may be mistaken exactly the term, but they're juniors. And so they're going to get them as juniors and seniors and they're going to get that, that tuition. So that's one thing. So we, we get excited about dual enrollment, but I understand we're cannibalizing our, our future a little bit there every time we do it. So great for students, great for kids and families, but maybe not so great for us for the bottom line. Second thing is there's some folks here, and she laughed, but she very consciously helped start a, a train down a track. If you've ever seen a train try to stop, it takes a long time. And Christie should have stayed here to listen to this. They started this train and it does not stop quickly. And what you just saw on the screen is part of that train still trying to stop because the car was stuck in the, in, at the, at the light there. And the train just ran through it. And there's car pieces everywhere and it's going to keep going. And we're going to keep seeing fallout like that and things that need to be corrected because we put that narrative and the press and the spokesman kept saying, oh, we're on probation. No, we never were. No, that's, no, that was wrong. That stuff shouldn't even go out in the public. This stuff's not supposed to be out until it's point, counterpoint, and everybody gets to go back and talk to it. And Dr. Sabaly and his team, Dr. Kurtz, you guys did a fantastic job. And we ended up with this little thing called a warning instead of this great big thing that it started out as. But there's the repercussions of that. And those people need to be held accountable. And she just got made emeritus. And yet she's the one who helped send this train down this road. And everybody thought we're going to have this magic pill. And trustee Getty, I'm not going to, I'm not going to call you names or criticize you, but you were part of this cabal behind the scenes. And I can give about 12, 20 names to this thing. And your, and your companions. And all of a sudden we got this magic pill and we've, we've appointed new people. We've picked a new president and everything's fixed and solved. Only we were less than, we were like 2% down last year in the fall and the spring and hated Dr. Sabaly and hated me as the board chair and Greg. And, and yet for 10 years we've been under, Rick was never, it was way down. And that's been talked about with the, with the enrollment. Now we're down over 10%. So what was the magic pill? You guys did these things and, and you supposedly solved this problem and you've taken over the board with appointees. And our enrollment just went this way. So I'd like to, I'd like to know what the analysis of that is. And what's the empirical data here? And what are people saying? I go back to Greg. Somehow I think the confidence of the community, for the majority of the community, has been lost. And there's that small minority of voices that were screaming for this and they've got it. And, and now we're seeing the consequences of it. So I just want everybody to remember that and I point that out. This is the worst enrollment numbers we've had as far as I can remember. I think, no, it's a long time. So, by a lot. So there we are. And, and there's no magic pill to turn this around like that.
I have a question.
Dr. Swain?
Yeah, so, so, Mr. Van Dushey, I, I felt the same about dual credit that you expressed. However, digging into the details a bit, and it was presented earlier. We have 1,700 students enrolled in dual credit, right? You remember that? How many, how many of them graduated with an associate's degree?
This year?
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't know that number, but.
It was 80 or 90.
I want to give you one data point just for a second.
95. So it was 95.
I have a, a daughter-in-law that was a dual enrollment student that did graduate before she even got her high school diploma from the Coeur d'Alene Charter Academy. So I underst, I support.
My point is that while on the surface it looks like you might be cannibalizing yourself, I look at it and say, we've got 1,700 students signed up and 85? 95 graduated with an associate's degree. That means there's 1,605 that are out there with some credit that are actually being enticed to come here to complete their program. So, so there's, now, I go back to what I said earlier about recruiting, retention, and marketing. And if we're not in the market, if we start to market in August, we're, we're not effective. And so I, I can't tell you how it's been in the past, but the major marketing campaign, I mean, there's, there was stuff going on, but the major marketing campaign started in August where they started really pushing stuff out. Students have already made their decisions. They've already made their, they've already paid their deposits. They're going to college somewhere else. So, so this year, we're going to start earlier. And that's what I've said. We've got to, we've got to fix these issues by December so that we can start marketing in, in, early in the, in the spring.
And, but to your point, I will say this. I'm not trying to go point for point of rebut, rebuttal here. But you've just expressed what the normal practice and policy has been, but that's the same thing we've been doing every fall for a long time. And so why is this one so ugly? I mean.
It's down. The community's watching. I have something I'd like to say, two things actually. One, I'm hoping you can maybe think on this. The letter of warning that we got from NWCCU, does it mention anything about academic freedom? Or is that properly defended by you and President Sabaly? Is that, but you can think on that. But, but my other question is, is you talk about recruitment and of students. Right now we have 18,000 earmarked for two recruiters and we have 30,000 earmarked for a housing stipend. So let's look at priorities of this institution. And that's students. And I'd say even doing the right thing for dual enrollments, okay? You mentioned a name that brought about the dual enrollment.
Wayne Meyer.
Wayne Meyer. Okay. That is, the community needs to know that your high school student can come out with their AAs and it is phenomenal opportunity. Most people, it's not wide known. If Coeur d'Alene Press was this community's friend, they would say that nearly once a month and try and get as many high schools into dual enrollment. So that, it may be harder on NIC's budget, but it is the best thing for this community.
No argument, yeah.
Can't argue that.
Yep, no argument.
Are there any other questions?
I have a, I'm waiting for my response. Letter of warning from NWCCU, did it mention academic freedom?
Mr. Chairman, trustee McKenzie, academic freedom is not specifically stated in the action letter.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Trustee Getty?
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Kurtz, was academic freedom mentioned in the site visit committee report?
Mr. Chairman, trustee Getty, yes, it was.
How many factual corrections was there of the site committee report?
Mr. Chairman, trustee McKenzie, there were a lot. I, I don't know the exact.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, let's stay with the most current, please.
Did the NWCCU, what did they tell us to respond to? Was it the site visit or the letter of warning and disregard pretty much everything before?
Mr. Chairman, trustee McKenzie, I'll be going over that in the accreditation update.
Thank you. We only need to respond to the letter of action letter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The Athletic Conference affiliation update. Alex Harris. I think we have you for security update too.
There are questions from both. Chair Wald, trustees, President Swain, Mayor Sir Lyons, thank you. Opportunity to provide an update. I believe the last time I was standing up here, you all had given direction to the president at the time to give us direction to go to the NWAQ and ask about the possibility of partially removing some of our teams from the NWAQ for NJCAA competition. We did receive a letter back from the NWAQ which declined that opportunity. They stated that, our initial agreement in 2014, it was that all sports were to move into that NWAQ and they don't have any appetite for us to be partially involved in, in that conference. So that's where we stand now.
Any questions? Yes. Trustee McKenzie.
Do we have any sense of feeling if any former trustees called NWCCU organization?
Trustee McKenzie, I couldn't speak to that. The communication was sent from the executive director of the NWAQ to former president Sabaly.
That's all we have. I know the former trustees were very close to that organization, so, the ones I replaced specifically.
Trustee Van Dushey?
I'm going to ask a question. I believe it's germane, it's slightly off-center on this question. So I, I'll apologize in advance. I hope it's not an inappropriate question. But one of the things that we've had addressed here and I, and we're under an athletic briefing. So I'm going to follow up with it. As a former college athlete myself and coach at the high school level, at a couple of different high schools and youth sports, multiple sports, I'm very concerned with safety for our, our student athletes and for athletes in general. And I was concerned about equality of our coaching staffs for our different sports. And I was surprised when it was brought to my attention that we did not have a properly paid golf coach and we did not, we were not providing him with a paid assistant coach while he was coaching both a men's and women's golf program. Just from a liability standpoint. a volunteer is way different than an employee, and the way, and what the standards that they're held to. Sorry, getting my thought out here. Must be getting late. It's a Monday. So, I'd like to know where we're at in addressing that situation with the golf teams, to bring our golfing coach up to par, and for his own wage, for the time that he's committed and devoted to that program, and the success that they've had, and to have a properly paid assistant coach for him. And then, my second part of my question would be just, are we at a point now where every team has at least a head coach and an assistant coach, or we're close to doing that? Because I think, again, that's a problem. You can only manage so many athletes and supervise properly. And I'd like to even bring it up now that we discuss it. Wrestling had two assistant coaches for the longest time, and then, just a few years ago, we, the former president took away that assistant coach. And I'm going to tell you right now, having been a wrestling coach, being certified with USA Wrestling, I have my bronze card, I coach in all three disciplines, and I've been to big national tournaments, I've been where we've had guys on multiple mats, even had the joy of coaching for one college tournament with my son's team in Iowa. You've got to have at least three coaches to manage the mats at tournaments, and wrestling needs a second assistant coach, and I'm not even sure they have a first one yet. So, I've given you about four things. One is, I'd like to see the wrestling come back. I think that's a safety and liability issue. And then, I'd like to know the equality, that we've at least got an assistant coach for everybody, and where are we at with our golf program, sir?
I think I can answer a few of those.
Thank you.
We did have many hirings of coaches and assistant coaches over the summer, and I can say successfully filled those positions. The one position we do not have filled, given the timing of the return, of having a temporary wrestling coach, while we had our former wrestling coach as the interim president, and now back to being the head coach, we have now advertised for a full-time assistant coach for wrestling.
I have a question regarding that.
Hold on. And the golf program, sir, where are we at on equalization of that for equality?
I have not been instructed by my direct supervisors to address that yet.
Well, I thought Dr. Sabali was working on that. Did it not go anywhere to just kind of get put on hold with transition?
Yeah, I didn't ever have a conversation with Dr. Sabali about that, but I think Cassie may have more.
Thank you, trustee Van Ducci. We are looking at the budget to see if we can do that. We're looking at opening up possibly a full-time wrestling coach. We'd have to advertise and recruit for that position. As far as an assistant coach, because-
Do you mean golf?
Did I say wrestling?
Yes, you did.
Can I just start? It's late.
That's why I was asking, just for clarity, because I had thrown wrestling into that conversation.
Take that back. Golf, yes, we are looking at that. Some of the factors we were discussing, and I'll say, myself and Ms. Garcia over here, and hopefully with our new president, we're bringing him on board, was we are waiting for the results of this letter to see whether or not, what our budget, our overall athletic budget was going to look like, to start making some decisions around where we can equalize and move and bring everybody up to par. So, the intention is, yes.
Cassie, you're going to let the sports, you're going to let the athletes fundraise? Far as I'm understanding, athletics isn't fundraising. They're not even fundraising to families and friends. I mean, my dad still gets a letter from the Air Force Academy, asking him if he wants to donate to athletics. My mom would, but she's passed away. I mean, I get, every day, the AOC sends me something just about, the Association of Graduates. So, what are we doing? Because there's, we're talking about our budget. We can spend a lot of money on contracts. We just wrote a bulletproof contract, and we got money going everywhere else, but now you're telling me I don't have money for sports, but we got athletes, and I think it's a safety issue. And yet, I have athletes that aren't being allowed to fundraise, but we're going to have a cruise, but that's not a fundraiser. That's just a meet and greet.
Right.
So, but every student athlete should be able to send a letter to all his family members. Grandma and grandpa will donate money. So where are we at on fundraising for athletics? I've not seen anything. I've been a booster guy all along. I saw we got our pass tonight. Thank you very much. I do appreciate that.
I agree. And it's my understanding that that was passed today. We have to coordinate those efforts with the Booster Club. Obviously, COVID was tough on the Booster Club to help offset some of those expenses, so I believe they're on track, and the ability for the athletes to do that was approved today in the president's cabinet.
What took so long?
I've only been here three weeks.
No, 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 no. This goes back to last year, sir. That's not on you. That's an institutional-
Just saying, I've only been here three weeks. I thought it's pretty good to get it done in three weeks.
That's an institutional issue, and there's other people in this room that I would point-
We are moving pretty fast on a lot of things.
But that was long overdue.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question related to sports.
Yes.
Does, does the athletic team, do they have a functioning weight room right now? And if they don't, when are they going to get it back, or?
I'm going to let him answer. Because functioning, I-
We have the athletic director-
It's been moved, it was moved from the basement of the dental clinic to the old industrial arts building. Sean Craft, I'm wrong, because I think it was about two weeks ago. It's not fully up and running in the industrial arts building yet. However, athletes do currently have access to the SWRC, and use of that for working out. And during the interim time that the dental clinic took over, went and post, which displaced the weight room, and the moving of the industrial arts folks to PTEC, and insert Meyer Health Science Project to getting the things moved, we're in transition there. But since day one, when the equipment was removed from where the dental clinic is, student athletes have been directed and coaches to work out in the SWRC.
Now, Alex, we'd had a challenge with the hours there, and then last year, we got them restored further, because we were closed at nights and weekends when the kids could access it. Are we still having those extended hours, so they're actually able to access that when they're not in class?
Absolutely. We took that trial period, I believe when I announced that, and we talked about it.
Because I pressed for that for quite a while.
Yep. And we took that trial period and tracked the usage, and saw success in that, are continuing to do that, to have those extended hours. We also lost our coordinator for the SWRC in the last four months, successfully hired a new one with experience, and I think he's already off to doing a great job in getting more usage. And if the numbers dictate, we're continuing to track, then we will open even more.
And the new weight room will be extremely convenient to the athletes, because it's much closer to the gym, and right at the end of the soccer field. So I think that'll be a great facility for them.
I have two questions.
Was that, is that over where the collision repair used to be?
It's right at the-
Carpentry.
Carpentry, so it's just on the other side. Okay. I remember where Cal was, and he was just there.
It's right next to the goal on the soccer field.
Trustee McKenzie, you had a-
One question. In the weekly report, could you just include the latest update with the athletic room and stuff? Just even if the plan is a year from now, or whatever, just let us know. I'd appreciate that. It's important to me. And two, for the sports crews, am I going to be seeing the coaches there of the different forces on the cruise?
Absolutely. Sean assures me that that will happen, our athletic director.
And I'll let that show up.
And trustee, our chairman Wal, just one more thing. There may be a misconception that athletics and Booster Club have not been fundraising for a while. If I may, trustee Burchette was at the Booster Club golf tournament, so we have been fundraising. There was some hangups on some certain- There has been hangups on some certain things. Mind you, I was given the responsibility in January, and so we're working towards that, but it's happening.
Thank you, Alex. You wanted to move on to campus security update.
My pleasure.
Sure, it is.
Chairman Wal, at the last board trustees meeting, an assignment was given to look at the feasibility of arming our campus security. I was given some information from former President Sabali, that that may have been taken with information from College of Eastern Idaho, who had shared some information that they were currently undergoing a project to arm their campus security. So I met with their dean of students, and their vice provost, and also their director of security. Apples and oranges. Their campus is six buildings. They have two recently retired police officers, who are they, who are there basically banker's hours, who are going to be armed, but they're six or eight part-time security are not. So, I just wanted to clear up that information, because I thought they had a model that, that nobody else did. But they don't. I can tell you, from initial look at what compensation is and expectations for training, for officially arming a campus security force, is going to cost us somewhere around $170,000 in the initial year, with then a cost of anywhere from 120 to 140, every additional year for training and compensation. So, that's the initial information. If you would like me to move forward to that.
Say that 140,000?
Yes.
For how many police officers?
No police officers. Idaho doesn't allow, per statute, for colleges and universities, like we see in other states, to have their own police forces. That's one of the main hangups to this. That's why we went out and contracted with Coeur d'Alene PD to have an SRO on campus, 40-plus hours a week, to do that, because we're not afforded the ability to have our own campus police department.
Do we share Gus's salary, or do we pay that entirely, with him being still a member of the Coeur d'Alene Police Department?
It's shared. He reports Coeur d'Alene PD, the details of that contract. I mean, I can share them now.
Well, okay, I was just curious. I thought there was a co-op with that, where they were helping share the cost, but he reports to them, but he interacts with our, our security team, because we do have a security team.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have several questions.
Oh, sorry.
I can wait. I got them written down.
Tom, go ahead.
Alex, I'm privy to a series of communications that you've had with Matt from North Idaho News, asking about security. Have you been part of those?
To clarify, communications with outside journalists, those kind of things go through the marketing communication. So, I conversed with Laura when she's asked me to answer questions about whatever is under my purview, which can be many things.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, because he's been sending me these, and I don't know if Laura's getting them or who, because there's a lot of good questions, and I've got three or four emails here that are security-related, and there were some legitimate questions and concerns. And so, that's why I wanted to see where we were at, what's our starting ground here, if you've seen these, or where we're at. Because somewhere in one of these, he made the comment that he's, you were one of the people he'd been referred to, and I didn't know what that meant exactly. So I was trying to figure out, because he's asked questions like, do we, are we equipped with Narcan, I think it's called, in case somebody has an overdose? Apparently, that's getting more and more common. Then there was some question about, since we're not armed, are we with tasers and/or pepper spray? And then, it came back to the idea of arming.
We are armed with tasers.
Okay.
And O.C. spray.
Okay. Do we have the Narcon? Because my understanding on that is that if we use it, and they don't need it, it doesn't hurt anybody, but it can be the thing that saves somebody. I'm not as familiar as some are. Do we have the Narcan? That was a question posed to me.
Our NIC employees do not. I believe there was a conversation in PC, but I was not privy to that conversation. So I don't know, what was it? If you're asking my opinion on why we don't have it currently, I'd be happy to share that.
Sure, if you have a moment you don't mind. I don't, I don't know it real well, so I'm asking the question, because it was posed to me.
So our SRO, Gus, does have Narcan. All Coeur d'Alene Police, Cootin County Sheriff, ISP, Cootin County Fire and Rescue, Coeur d'Alene City Fire and Rescue, which have continuously, since we've started training with them, and doing table tops with them, and the constant communication, the response time isn't worth, will be here, given our location, in very timely manner to use Narcan, given the intricacies of having that. It's not just as easy as you carrying around in your pocket like a pen, or anything like that.
Training.
Has to be stored and refrigerated to a certain temperature, so in the winter and the summer, there's other things around that. So, I've had many discussions since Narcan became a thing, probably five or six years ago. And to this point, when I've been asked by administration to go down that road, my recommendation has been no, because of my discussions with local first responders. But I'm willing to entertain that again, if that's what I'm being asked to do.
I'm just exploring right now, because I didn't know where you were at on this. Because they had, like I said, it's from the community, and he has kind of aggregated some of those questions and concerns. And there were some questions about, if we're not armed, what do we have on the taser versus the pepper spray? And then, what sort of training are they getting for de-escalation, dealing with people having mental challenges? Are they trained in, you know, proper handcuffing, defensive tactics? You know, in my world, we've been hand-to-hand or unarmed combat. Are people, how well are people able to defend themselves, particularly since they're not armed with a firearm? And are they, you know, single, or are they impaired? So I think there was a question about just safety and the ability to have crowd control, or even more importantly, if somebody has an intent to harm, how easily can our people de-escalate or defuse that situation, and are they capable of doing that? And so, there's, it's a bigger question, looking at what we've done, and what we have, and to the level of training, and whether they should be armed or not.
Chairman Wal, trustee Van Ducci, I appreciate the question, and I think you, specifically trustee Van Ducci, can understand my answer, when I would love to have that conversation either in executive session, or in a workshop, to talk about the eight-plus years since I've been in charge of security and tasked with training, and the responsibility of that. I can assure you that we are the envy of most of the state, besides Boise State, who has Boise State, Boise PD there on campus. But for reasons I think you can understand, I don't know if this is the appropriate place to talk about the details.
No, it's probably not.
If I may.
We don't give away our game plan. Did you have a question?
I have a suggestion. I have a suggestion, that the president and Alex actually maybe sit down with who's asking these questions. And, because I have seen numerous questions, and they seem extremely valid, and I don't necessarily want to ask them right here, as you just said. But I think they need to be answered, and somebody with experience and intelligence is asking extremely important questions.
So I'd just say that sometimes the answer is, "Yeah, we got it covered," and "No, I can't tell you what the answer is."
Yeah, I can tell you, I'm very proud of the work we've done in the past, I think, seven-plus years. It's been 20, but I'm trying to figure out how long that's been there, and the progress we've made. So if, you know, Dr. Swain-
Absolutely.
Wants me to provide a report to whomever, whenever, I'm happy to.
I'm happy to meet with them. That's not the issue. I just, I just wanted to be clear that when we're talking to members of the press, as Mr. Van Ducci noted, we don't give away our game plan. And so, as I said, yes, we got it covered, and no, I'm not telling you what the details are.
And I would agree with that. There's a certain level, if I think, of our training and preparation that we should be able to share to a point. But the same thing, we have our stuff, then once we're boots on the ground somewhere, then obviously, how we execute is a different story.
I think on day two that I was here, I met with our security guys, and I asked them, off to the side, very specific questions, and they assured me that they were confident that they have it under control. And I didn't ask for details, but I asked them their credentials, and I'm pretty confident that they have it under control, so.
If I may, every institution who has a mass shooting thinks they have it under control. So, there's always more to do.
I would agree with wholeheartedness, and have put much work into it, and would appreciate any support or review of that.
Is there no response that we can give, even a reporter, if they, in writing, or somehow say they're not going to relay our game plan?
Do you mean us as trustees, or for the college? I think we're addressing the college's response. Or are you thinking what us individually?
No, from the college's response, that's what I want.
Okay, because I want to-
Yeah, I don't, so I honestly don't trust the press to keep it a secret. And so, I have no problem meeting with them, and we can discuss to a certain level what our security parameters are. But I'm not, I don't want, I don't want any of us to go beyond that point.
Trustee Roger.
Alex, a couple questions. With your $130,000 to $140,000 cost, did any of that take into account additional lib- With your 130 to 140,000 dollar cost, did any of that take into account additional liability for the for the college?
No, it does not. I have not gotten an answer on that yet.
Okay, thank you. Second question would be, have we polled our our current workforce to see if they would be even interested in carrying a weapon?
I did and they were not.
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't, I can't, I didn't talk to all of them. I talked to four or five in very informally on my day two or day three and they said they would prefer not to carry weapons.
Four, there is more than four and five people.
Yeah, that's what I said. I only talked to four or five. I did not talk to all of them.
Can we care about all voices? Not, can we?
Chair Walde, Trustee McKenzie, I believe Dr. Swain speaking of four or five of the people that work for security, not the entire institution. Correct.
And I apologize. That was my question about the security force.
Yeah, it was the security force. Yeah.
One quick question, Alex. Who is Stewart?
Stewart, gentleman in the back there.
That's Stewart. Okay, I want to make sure that's who I thought it was. Okay.
Are there any other questions for Alex?
All right. Thank you.
I wasn't sure they were referring to you or not, but now I know there's not another Stewart. Well, because the documents say everything was referred to Alex and Stewart. So that's what I'm trying to figure out. If I missed something.
We'll move on to the accreditation update. Steve Kurtz.
Alex, your phone is still up here, so don't leave it out.
Somebody's phone's up there.
That's right, someone's phone.
Steve, that's the first round if you hold it for captive.
First, I just need to clarify something. Trustee McKenzie, you asked me about academic freedom. Even though we don't have to write to it, it was mentioned, it was in the same area as financial stability where we don't have to write to it, but it was mentioned in the report.
It's still an accreditation standard that we uphold. Absolutely agree.
Right, but it just means that if something happens down the road during during this warning period, it's still there. It's still mentioned in the report for the team to look at, although we don't have the right to it. Same thing with financial stability.
Our superb financial stability, it's in the same category. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you again for having the opportunity to update you. I took the approach of providing a very brief update using my experience as a peer evaluator and looking at if if I was an evaluator, what would I look at when coming into the institution and trying to find out what is ample evidence to prevent, to present to the team in the report? And not only that, since this is a sanction, eventually this goes to the NWCCU commissioners for their consideration as well. So what would they consider as what is acceptable? Again, please keep in mind that any comments expressed do not represent the views of NWCCU and my analysis is based upon all known information and my experience as a peer evaluator. Before proceeding with the update on the tasks of the action letter, please note that there are four areas concerned, noted specifically in three bulleted points located on page two of the action letter. I'm not going to read those, but I'll let you read them. NWCCU is concerned that, quote, "The NIC Board of Trustees' actions do not provide assurance that the board has or will follow through with steps agreed to in the May 28, 2021 Board Statement to Restore Effective Governance at NIC," end quote. In writing the mid-cycle report, all these concerns will need to be addressed as the NWCCU evaluation team and NWCCU commissioners will evaluate the college specifically on board adherence to policies, notably those pertaining to roles and responsibilities and ethical behavior. In the action letter, NWCCU also cited the following language that resulted in the sanction that NIC must address during the prescribed period starting on April 1, 2022. And we eventually have report and follow-up visit along NIC's mid-cycle visit that starts April 17, 2023. Easy way to remember it, it's tax day. NIC was placed under heightened monitoring by the commission, resulting in periodic reports with board meetings and census enrollment reports. The commission specifically cited that NIC was found out of compliance with Eligibility Requirement Number Nine for Governance Standard Two A1 Governance and Two D Two Institutional Integrity. All right, so this is going to be a very, very brief update and over the last, oh, well, since April, we received the action letter, been working with the executive accreditation team to update anytime we can, so that it's a report in progress. So this is an abridged version of that. So there's a lot of the work to go and a lot more evidence to put in besides what we have here for your presentation tonight. So each of the five areas, I'm just going to call them prompts. And one thing to note that in my 23 years of combined experience serving as a peer reviewer for both the Higher Learning Commission and NWCCU, what stands out here is they never, they, when I meaning the accrediting agencies, never use the word require, but they do with institutions on sanction. Membership in institutional accrediting agencies is voluntary and as a result, the member colleges agree to follow the established policy and procedures to establish and continue membership. The word requires expresses the immediacy of and urgency of the Board of Trustees to resolve the following two items. The first prompt is that the NIC's board is fully functioning with five members and as everyone aware, now we have a fully constituted board with three members recently apported by the ISBOE, the State Board of Education.
I have a question.
Yes.
Waiting to be recognized by Chair Walde.
Yes.
You just mentioned accreditation is membership is voluntary. So is membership with NWCCU voluntary by this Board of Trustees or the State Board of Education?
Mr. Chairman, Trustee McKenzie, it's it's set up by federal law to be voluntary. There's now.
So the Board of Trustees that has central oversight of this college, has their accreditation mandated by the State Board of Education then?
Mr. Chairman, Trustee McKenzie, we receive authorization from the state to operate and we have approval processes that we go through, plus we collaborate. The from the federal level, membership in institutional accreditation, the main accreditation that that most higher education institutions have is designed to be voluntary. However, we are forced, we cannot operate without institutional accreditation because it is the only way that we can have financial aid, qualify for federal financial aid and also our transfer of credits.
Question, Tom.
Thank you, Chairman. Steve, there's a lot of accrediting agencies across the country and in different regions, there are multiple accreditation agencies. And I've read recently of some of the folks, Texas, Florida, they've made some changes on who their accreditation agencies are that they're using. It's my understanding, and I'm curious to know if you're aware of this and if this is accurate, that recently through a rules passage, that the State Board of Education may have tried to institute that the NWCCU is the only accreditation agency that we're allowed to use. Is that correct? Have you heard anything about that?
Mr. Chairman, Trustee Banducci, unfortunately, I don't have the answer to.
That is correct. That is correct by state SBOE policy. They just did that in the last five months guaranteed. I believe it was the end of April or end of May.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Steve. Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Dr. Kurtz, Trustee Banducci suggested that there are a number of other accreditation institutions in the country. Is it not true that once an institution has been placed in a warning status that they cannot entertain changing accreditation?
We're not allowed to shop around and find somebody that.
Correct, yeah. Mr. Chairman, Trustee Getty, yes, that is the correct. It would be very difficult for NIC to switch accrediting agencies while we have the sanction.
Just, I understood that. I knew that was to be the fact. My point was that we have apparently been precluded from the opportunity of ever working with anybody other than the guys that are holding this over our head right now. And when you look at Sonny Ramswami, having been such good friends with Rick McLennan and some of the other phone calls and some of the other relationships and all the people that know and the folks of Matt Freeman at the State Board of Education and you, John, Getty, trustee, and the letters you wrote to them and all the affiliations with Ms. Kio and all the relationships, it's all interesting how we've got these two organizations who've been holding this stuff over our head and they're going to keep holding it over our head. So yeah, we're not going to be able to change, but I thought it was rather disingenuous that I'd been told that the legislature is going to have to address this because of a rule passage by the State Board of Education, who technically doesn't oversee us, their K through 12, but that's a way they could kind of get in there again like they just did, for the first time ever in the state of Idaho, to actually appoint beyond just bringing it back to a quorum. So now they're precluding us from ever in the future looking for a different organization. So we'll always have that threat there if they ever decide they don't like who's in charge here or what we're doing. Okay, I just.
It was at the.
Go ahead.
It was at the, wait, 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 it's not, I'm looking at the.
Okay, as you notice, the first one's easy, yes or no. The prompts we have to write to, they're going to be pretty simple. However, the second one is not going to be that simple, the one that ran in front of you. And will require substantial evidence to submit to a visiting team or NWCCU commission that NIC is compliant with Eligibility Requirements Nine and Standards Two A1 and Two D Two. When drafting this particular section of the report for our April 20, 2023 visit, the first raffle most likely contained the following highlights of NIC's progress, and this is the first of two slides. First is, under the advice of the interim president, the trustees constituted a consent agenda for regular board meetings that includes non-controversial agenda items such as meeting minutes and second reading for operational policies. I envision that we will list all the policies as evidence for the team to consider. During the board meetings occurring from February through June of 2022, all consent agenda items, including the seven different policies impacting operations presented to the board, were accepted without debate. One member of the Board of Trustees and the interim president participated in the Annual Governance Leadership Institute hosted by the ACCT. And the trustees also adopted a policy for new member orientation to ensure structured training for board members. Moving on to the second slide, under the second prompt, we have to write, since we received the action letter on April 1, 2022, we haven't had too many board members, but since then, the Board of Trustees have allowed the opportunity for public comment during every regular meeting, just to let you know that. During the May 25, 2022 meeting, there was feedback from several trustees to the faculty assembly that made it clear that all constituency groups would be welcome to address the board during regular meetings.
Dr. Kurtz. Chairman Walde. Since when and how did the whole public comment thing become a requirement? Mr. Lyons has repeatedly explained to everybody, this is a business meeting of the board. We're not like the city council. We don't have to have public comment. And if we do, we actually can limit it to be germane to something that's on the agenda where at the city councils, people can talk about the butterflies and the trees. Yet, because of the complaints internally and others, suddenly we made this an interesting topic, a conversation, it became an issue of accreditation, but yet we're not required to have public comment. And it's interesting too, because we've only not had it a few times and in one of those, even I had Acting President Burns make the call. And other times, Mr. Lyons has suggested we don't because of the contentious nature of the meeting or others. So it's interesting how we've picked and chosen selectively and where we've chosen not to have it and how it kind of all gets lumped together. But at the end of the day, how did this become an accreditation requirement when technically it's not required and these are just our business meetings and we, out of the goodness of our heart and graciousness, allow the public to opine on the subjects on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, Trustee Banducci, that's a good question. The public comment has always been customary and I can't speak to NWCCU and placing that language in the action letter, but it provides some consistency and input from the stakeholders that you represent. And with constituency groups, that addresses the input from faculty and staff in the Senate as part of the shared parts, I'm sorry, I beg your pardon, participatory governance model that we have.
Thank you. It's not shared governance, it's participatory and the Colonel can appreciate that too. We don't get told by the NCOs and the junior officers what to do. We take their input and we make a decision.
During the April 27, 2022 regular meeting, the board voted in new officers and the board conduct policy voted on tonight. Could also be argued that the board's actions over the past few months could be a response to the statements of the resolutions of ASNC Faculty Assembly, Staff Assembly and the College Senate. We could argue in that direction. Now, that's the, that concludes the required task. For the next section, we have to write to, NIC was found to be substantially in compliance but in need of improvement with Standard Two A Two Effective System of Leadership Staff by Qualified Administrators, Standard Two A Three Employment of a CEO, Standard Two A Four Decision Making Processes of the college, including consideration of views of faculty, staff, administrators and students, and Eligibility Requirement Ten Chief Executive Officer and Number Eleven Administration. Even though the word emphasized in this section is recommends, there's still urgency to provide evidence for the 2023 April visit due to the current sanction by NWCCU. And the two pieces of items that we would definitely include is the permanent present was selected on June 22 and that the contract was approved on July 14. And we can even add even language for tonight's action with the modification of the contract. The last item is that President Swain will be focusing on filling the executives vacancies as he stated earlier in the meeting. So what happens next? Even though the team, I'm sorry. In addition to the governance and institutional integrity concerns, the college is preparing the assurance argument for NIC's two outstanding recommendations from the April 2020 year seven visit, as well as a required formative evaluations with the elements of Standard One, planning and mission fulfillment and the documentation of student achievement. The mid-cycle report is due around March 6. We haven't had a definite deadline, but it's typically six weeks ahead of the visit. The mid-cycle occurs on April 17 through the 19. During the mid-cycle visit, NIC should expect to see a full review team with meetings with the board, faculty, staff and students. At the conclusion of the visit, the team will depart and eventually the mid-cycle evaluation team and NWCC will send a confidential report to Dr. Swain, allowing NIC to suggest changes for factual errors. And in June 2023, the NWCCU commissioners convene in Portland to determine an action with NIC's progress on the outstanding recommendations and the regular formative elements of the mid-cycle. Then after that, we should receive an action letter based on anything that the commission votes on. The extremes are a show cause and the other extreme is an outright removal of the sanction with no follow-up reports. And there are many other options that the commission could consider.
And the final report is due for publication August of 23.
It's usually 30 to 60 days after the board takes action. They tried to get them out as quickly as possible, sir.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Kurtz? Thank you very much. This is really important for us to follow this process. Thank you.
You're welcome.
There is no need for an executive session. There is no need for an executive session tonight. Are there any remarks for the good and the order?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have two things. First of all, on a personal nature, my old Facebook account has been hacked. And I hope there isn't any, anything that comes up on NIC there. I do not ask people to buy cryptocurrency, by the way.
You sent me a friend request.
And secondly, I'd like to point out to Trustee Banducci that the legislature still has to approve any change in rule that the State Board of Education presents. It'll be fought there. Trustee McKenzie.
I would just like to point out that in the midst of this same meeting that we honored Christie Wood, that people have been emailing the board about that decision and talking about removing their, having, I quote, "My son drops all classes and never returned to this college." Christie Wood is a tyrant and not a person that should be representing NIC. And they list lots of reasons of the direction that you three trustees are taking this college and the environment that you're allowing to foster and celebrate here.
Thank you for that broad experience. Are there any other? We are adjourned.